Before I call the meeting to order, I'd like to note we have interpretation services for this meeting. The interpreter this evening is Alejandra Villagrana. Ms. Villagrana, would you please stand, raise your hand? Please ask her for a listening device if you'd like interpretation service. Antes de llamar a la junta a orden, me gustaría notar que contamos con servicios de interpretación para esta junta, y la señora Villagrana está ahí atrás. Gracias. I'd like to call this meeting to order for the City Council Meeting of October 4th, 2022. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll and make an announcement about accessing the meeting?
In order to participate in the City Council Meeting virtually, please register to speak using the link on the agenda under Public Comment or call 1-669-900-9128 and use webinar ID code number 86520032587. To raise your hand to speak on a particular agenda item, please use the Raise Hand button in the Zoom Meeting portal. If you're using your phone, please press *9 on the telephone keypad to raise your hand to speak. Press *6 to unmute your phone. When it is your time to speak, the microphone will be unmuted for the time allotted by the mayor and will be muted upon completion of your comments. Councilmember Cordero?
Here.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Here.
Councilmember Soto?
Here.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Present.
Madam Mayor Patino? Here. The first item this evening is a proclamation, and Councilmember Cordero will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This proclamation is for the...to honor Code Enforcement Week, and there's one or two of them here today. I might just add, Madam Mayor, that it's quite a job that they are faced with, and sometimes under some very difficult circumstances. And their job helps to relieve our local law enforcement people from doing things like this. So this is a very important position in the city and in the state. Whereas, the second week of October is designated as the Code Enforcement Appreciation Week throughout the state of California to recognize and celebrate the positive role code enforcement has in its communities. And whereas, code enforcement provides for the safety, health, and welfare to residents and businesses through the enforcement of local, state, and federal laws and ordinances dealing with various issues of building, zoning, and housing. And whereas, members of the Code Enforcement Division are dedicated highly qualified and highly trained professionals who strive for neighborhood preservation through education. And whereas, code enforcement officers often have a high visibility visible role in the community they serve and regularly interact with the public and a variety of federal, state, and county and local officials. And whereas, the City of Santa Maria recognizes and honors its code enforcement team, continues to serve the community in a variety of ways to improve the quality of life for residents and businesses. Now therefore, Alice Patino, Mayor for the City of Santa Maria, hereby designates the week of October 3rd through the 7th, 2022, as Code Enforcement Appreciation Week in the City of Santa Maria, and recognizes and honors the Code Enforcement Division. This was adhered to and signed by our mayor on the 4th day of October of 2022, and the seal of the great city of Santa Maria has been affixed to it. And here to accept it, I guess is the whole team?
Yes.
All right.
Yay!
Who's in charge? You can say something.
I will. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council Members. Thanks, Sean.
You look pretty in pink and hot khaki.
We appreciate this so much. I am so proud of this team for the outstanding work that they do for the community and all the education that they provide. And we just, again, appreciate this so much for being recognized for the hard work that we do. And tomorrow, in an outreach effort, we are going to be having coffee and donuts outside of the Community Development Center at 110 South Pine Street. So come by and have coffee and donuts with us. And also, fire and planning and building and Public Works are going to be joining us too. So we hope to see you all out there. Have a wonderful evening. Thank you.
Perfect. I have one comment. So how many more workers do you need? You guys do one heck of a job, and Councilmember Cordero was right. And, you know, we understand that staffing is hard, but give us, you know, give us time and an opportunity to help staff you.
We appreciate that. Yes, we do need more folks.
Thank you.
She asked you how many. You didn't tell her.
Fifteen?
Okay.
Or twenty-seven. I like that rather. We appreciate your guys' support.
Could you introduce everyone up there, please?
Sure. Well, if you guys would like to...
Sure.
Well, and I'm Tom Palacios.
I'm Yvette Fuentes.
I'm Eileen Gutierrez.
I'm Erin Luton.
Hi, I'm Ronaldo Rendon.
I'm Martín Molina.
Okay. Thank you for all that you do in our community. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
By the way, me?
Yes, okay.
Just a quick question. Just want to recognize a face I recognize from a graduate from Allen Hancock College, Ronaldo. I had the pleasure of working along him, helping students at the high school. So he's a great employee. And yeah, I was glad and surprised to see you here. So welcome to the city.
The next item this evening is also a proclamation, and Councilmember Escobedo will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Today I have the pleasure to present this proclamation for Fire Prevention Week, where as the City of Santa Maria is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting the City of Santa Maria. And where fires are serious public safety concerns, both locally and nationally, and the greatest risk from fire is in the home. And whereas, a smoke alarm sends smoke well before the residents can, providing an alert in the event of a fire in which residents can might have a little as two minutes to escape safely. And whereas, residents who have planned or practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas, residents should ensure their smoke and carbon maxing or CO alarms meet the needs of all their family members, including those with sensory or physical disability disabilities. And whereas, the Santa Maria Fire Department is dedicated to reducing the occurrences of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and education. And whereas, in 2022, Fire Prevention Week, "Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape," effectively serves as a reminder that it's important to plan and practice a home fire escape plan. Now therefore, Alice M. Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby is recognized October 9th through October 15th of 2022 as the Fire Prevention Week in the City of Santa Maria, and encourage all residents to plan and practice a home fire escape plan. Learn the sounds of their smoke and carbon oxid alarms and respond when alarm sounds by exiting the building immediately. And this proclamation will be received by our Fire Marshal, Jim Austin.
Thank you. It's a hard act to follow, but I'll do my best. It's just me from the Fire Department today. Thank you, Mayor Patino, and esteemed council members for this proclamation. Every year, in the beginning of October, fire departments across the nation inform the public about the need for prevention practices through various messaging platforms, including public speaking. This year's message, as was mentioned, is "Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape." In 2020, there were 372,000 residential structure fires throughout the nation, according to the U.S. Fire Administration. So having a plan when a fire occurs in a home can make the difference in a safe evacuation. This is a reminder from your fire department to have a plan and to practice that plan. And on that note, the Fire Department is having a Fire Prevention Day at Prescott Park this Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. along with the Fire Department personnel and equipment. There will be members from other city divisions, including code enforcement, and free hot dogs for the first 100 people by the...from the Kiwanis Club. So please come and enjoy us.
Thank you.
Marshal, sorry. Could you repeat the times?
So it's going to be 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
At Prescott Park.
At Prescott Park. And basically, the plan is to set up right behind Fire Station 3, but in the park.
Okay. And we have three members of our Fire Department in the back, right? Would you gentlemen please stand? Thank you. Thank you very much. Next, we have public comment. No, we have another proclamation. Councilmember Waterfield will be making that presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And this presentation is in regards to the arts. Whereas, the arts and humanities embody so much of the accumulated wisdom, intellect, and imagination of human mankind. And whereas, the arts and humanities enhance and enrich the lives of everyone in Santa Maria and across the United States of America. And whereas, the arts and humanities play a unique role in the lives of families, the city, and the country. And whereas, despite significant losses due to the coronavirus pandemic, the creative industry remains among the most vital sectors of the American economy. And whereas, since 1965, the Santa Maria Arts Council has been an umbrella organization for local art groups and supporters. The Arts Council continues to initiate, encourage, and expand activities that are open, new opportunities for all artists, students, and residents of the Santa Maria Valley. And whereas, for decades, the City of Santa Maria Recreation and Parks Department has worked to encourage and promote public art programs and cultural events throughout the city. Now therefore, Alice M. Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby recognize October 1st through October 31st as National Arts and Humanities Month in the City of Santa Maria, and call upon community members to participate, celebrate, and promote the arts and culture in the City of Santa Maria. And here to accept this is Hannah Rubacalva, President of the Arts Council, and John Hood Department of Fine Arts at Allen Hancock College.
Oh, thank you so much. Well, thank you, everybody. I'm John from Hancock College. And we appreciate you recognizing not only October as arts and humanities, but, you know, pretty much every day for me, you know, and definitely for Hannah. We have a lot of events going on constantly. And me being at Hancock, we have PCPA, which I believe Cinderella opens November 10th, so that's a biggie. And we have Foxworthy Gallery on campus, and it's just numerous. We have everything that you can ever enjoy, dance, and drama, and music, and the visual arts, we have it. So hopefully, everyone will come out, not only for October, but just every month that we have something going on. And I don't know if you want to plug something?
I just want to thank you for recognizing Arts and Humanities Month. The arts definitely make Santa Maria an amazing community to live in. It's vibrant and diverse, and there's so much that's offered here. And so thank you on behalf of our artists and our arts organizations on celebrating Arts and Humanities Month.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Next, we have public comment period. Madam Clerk, would you please read the criteria for the public comment portion of the agenda?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on the printed agenda this evening. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given, however, state law does not allow action to be taken on matters not on the printed agenda. Once the public comment period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to submit a request to speak form. Madam Mayor, we...staff has received one written communication from Randy Jackson requesting that term limits be set for the Library Board of Trustees, and it was forwarded to council members earlier this week. And we have two requests to speak in chambers and none on Zoom.
Thank you. Gary Hall, followed by Jose Dominguez. Good evening, Mr. Hall.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Gary Hall, and I am a resident of Rancho Buena Vista Mobley Estates at 2135 North Railroad Avenue here in Santa Maria. I represent the North Santa Barbara County Mobile Homeowners Team, or NESBID. I am pleased to acknowledge the first 2022 hybrid stakeholder meeting did occur on September 22nd. Thank you, Assistant City Manager Ackelman. Councilmembers Soto and Escobedo, city staff representatives, mobile home residents, and mobile home park owner representatives, all attended the meeting. As a way of reminder, the June 7 motion was, and I'll quote, "Following council discussion and public input on motion, direction was given to staff to work with community members and park owners to examine enhancing the model lease agreement, to see if there is room for improvement, and to look at alternatives. I believe it is fair to say we had a good start, but there is a long way to go. Follow-up meetings are desired and anticipated. Later in this meeting, according to the agenda, we will learn about the planned Paradiso residential development, which includes senior apartments. If approved, it could certainly help ease our housing shortage and could provide additional housing options for seniors. However, Paradiso will not solve the more immediate problem facing seniors, and that is how can we afford to stay in place in our mobile homes when space rents keep rising indiscriminately. I favor the solution we call mobile home rent stabilization, which has already been adopted in numerous surrounding jurisdictions. I know fair, beneficial, mandatory, and enforceable mobile home rent stabilization in Santa Maria is achievable. If willing and open-minded participants look for positive solutions, it will be a challenge, and it has been a challenge, but I remain optimistic. Thank you."
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Jose Dominguez? Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor Patino and esteemed City Council. I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak. Today, I come to you with a proposal. It's something revolutionary, I believe, in this country. And I believe that we should move ahead with municipal IDs. We have a large undocumented population here in Santa Maria, and it would really help if we had a way to identify ourselves as to the police, or if we need to catch a check or go to the library. I propose that we have the, like, I'll know, like, maybe we could put, like, our bus pass on it, like, on the back, like, that you'd pay, like, every year, or, like, you could pay in, like, five years in advance for a bus pass, and then you'd have it printed on the back, and you just have an ID saying that you're the resident of Santa Maria. And this is a proposal that I love because, like, the beautiful thing about Santa Maria is it doesn't matter where you're from. And that's what I like to propose. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you for being here. That concludes the public comment portion of the agenda. Before moving on, Mr. Stillwell, are any comments you wish to make?
Okay.
Moving on to the consent calendar, Madam Clerk, could you please read item number
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on the printed agenda this evening. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to...I'm sorry. I was reading the wrong thing. Just realized that. Sorry. Routine items are presented for City Council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by roll call vote. With one motion, these items are discussed only on the request of council members.
Thank you. Does anyone have items they wish to pull for discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Ms. Escobedo?
Yeah, I have...I would like to pull for discussion item 3F.
3F, okay. Anyone else? Please, could you please read that?
3F is "Adopt a Resolution Approving an Amendment to the Reimbursement Agreement with School Mill Investors LLC for the Construction Upgrade of Sanitary Sewer Segment D-13."
Okay, Ms. Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to request some clarification in regards to this reimbursement agreement. To if a city manager or Public Works director can talk a little bit about what it is.
Sure, I can have David Baez from the Public Works Department give a brief staff summary of the item.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Escobedo, essentially, this was a reimbursement agreement for a sewer extension, sewer line improvement that's on the AB 1600 Growth Mitigation Program. The developer...we staff worked with the developer for that. The...and it's essentially an improvement that's on the AB 1600 program. And it was an agreement that the city and the developer proposed to do. They've gone halfway through and ran into some financial difficulties. So this amendment here is a means to help them, the developer, proceed and complete the project.
Okay, so this was already in...it was already planned to be...to happen?
Correct. It was...it was in agreement with the...this had come to the City Council in 2020, as noted in the staff report. And financial difficulties, COVID, had halt...had the progress...the project had halted. And here we are with a...an amendment for...because they had completed about 65% of the...of the project. And so this is an effort to proceed and complete the project and assist the developer at the same time.
And do you have a...when will this was supposed to happen? How...how in advance did this happen? This was going to happen in 2022, or the timeline for that?
So for the timeline moving at this point, it is 150 days after the following...if the council so chooses to approve it, the...the project will proceed, and it can be completed within 150 days.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, you said our Public Works Director has his hand up? Yes, Madam Mayor. Okay. When you said that, I'm looking around the room. Okay, thank you.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for the question, Councilman. Yeah, just reiterate what David said. We had an agreement with the developer to complete this project, and this is simply an amendment to try to fund the project through its completion and try to close the loop in 150 days to complete this project overall. So we're confident that this amendment will finish this project. And I'm available for any other questions.
All good. Thank you.
Are you fine? Okay.
If no other questions, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the consent calendar as submitted.
Second. And I have a second. Having heard the motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Next, we have a presentation. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will receive a presentation from AT Still University to provide an update on their medical programs.
Thank you. So Mr. Stillwell, would you like to do the introductions?
Just briefly, we're proud to have AT Still University in our...in our city. And they have a new dean and professor of the college, Eric Sowers, who is here today to give us an update on AT Still's recent progress and the impacts they're having and will have on our community. I'll turn it over to Eric.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Sowers, and welcome to Santa Maria.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Patino, City Manager Stillwell, who invited us here, and council members. On behalf of the president of our university, Dr. Craig Phelps, and our senior vice president for strategic planning, Dr. Ted Wendell, I just want to extend our deepest gratitude for the opportunity to be here this evening to talk a little bit about our university and what it is we're doing here. I'm going to provide just a brief background about AT Still University, and then a little bit more about our newest college and the Physician Assistant Program, which I will often slip into saying PA program for short. So physician assistant equals PA. Forgive me, I gave slides with more background information than I planned to go through, so I'll click through them rather rapidly, just in the interest of staying on track. Just a little bit about our university. We were founded in 1892 as the founding school of osteopathic medicine. We now have three campuses, and we focus exclusively on graduate health professions education. So we don't have any undergraduate programs to date. We enroll approximately 4,000 students in our programs across the university, and we integrate the osteopathic principles of mind, body, and spirit. If you're not familiar with osteopathic medicine today, it's really analogous with allopathic medicine. They're DOs as opposed to MDs, but in pretty much every jurisdiction, they're equivalently licensed to practice medicine across the...across the whole spectrum. AT Still University is a leader in what we have coined whole-person healthcare, and that really involves healing in an integrated care model and a real attention to outreach and community service. Our campuses today, we currently have three campuses and one additional location. Our campuses are in Kirksville, Missouri, very rural area, Mesa, Arizona, a big suburb, bedroom community, and then our newest campus here in Santa Maria, California. And then we have a dental clinic as part of our...one of our dental schools that's in St. Louis, Missouri. We offer 15 doctoral programs, 16 master's degree programs, and 16 certificate programs. Our mission is really centrally focused on producing healthcare professionals who are committed to serving the underserved. That's really what we do. Those are the kinds of programs we create. That's the way we educate and train our students. A couple of points of pride, we are actually in our 130th year as a university, so we are not a new fly-by-night startup as a university. We have a long history and tradition. We have just received, five years in a row, the Health Education Excellence in Diversity Award, as well as another Institutional Excellence Award for diversity. We're very proud of the efforts that we've done on that front. Healthcare professionals are sort of notoriously underrepresented from the patients that they serve, and we have a very specific mission as a university to change that and produce future healthcare providers that represent the populations that they care for. The newest college here, right in Santa Maria, is our College for Healthy Communities, for which I serve as the dean. As I said, we are...we are here in Santa Maria. For those of you who are familiar with the...I refer to it as the flagship building of Coast Hills Credit Union. Right over on Betarravia and the freeway, we occupy about 25,000 square foot of that space. They've been a fantastic partner for us, and it's beautiful, beautiful facilities. Just a little bit about our college right now. We have one founding program that has launched us and gotten our foothold here. our foothold here. That is our Central Coast Physician Assistant Studies Program. We accept 90 students a year. We admitted our first class last year. It is a two-year program where the students do one year of, of really course, coursework, classroom education here in Santa Maria, and then in their second year, they go out actually across the country to federally qualified community health centers. And our plans are to grow our campus and our presence here locally significantly in the years to come, predominantly based on the local needs, the regional needs, and the national needs for healthcare providers. Our Central Coast Physician Assistant Program was actually developed in partnership with the National Association for Community Health Centers, and we are developing, we are producing community-oriented PAs who will go and provide primary care health services to underserved populations. That's really central to the mission of what we do. Our mission specifically is to educate culturally humble, diverse physician assistants who will go out and serve the underserved. And our vision is to actually be the national source of producing these providers to go out and work in community health centers and meet the needs of, of those most vulnerable among us. I'm really incredibly proud of this particular slide, so I'll spend just a minute more on it. Our student body is incredibly diverse. In our first year, we admitted a class of 29% that was self-identified as Hispanic or Latin American, and in our second year, we actually increased that to 38%. Just for context, the percentage of physician assistants out there, there's about 150,000 of them practicing across the country, about 6% of them are Hispanic or Latin American, and we've admitted a class that's 38%. So we're going to make a significant difference. Similarly, we just admitted a class 18% black or African American. Only 3% of PAs nationwide identify as black or African American. We have a significant proportion of first-generation college students, actually 60%. That's unheard of in graduate health professions programs, and we have more than doubled the number of our students who come from economically disadvantaged backgrounds to 62%. Again, also unheard of to be admitting students from those backgrounds into graduate health professions programs. 44% of our class comes from areas of health profession shortages, and we are training these folks to go back and serve their communities. We do have 21 students from the Central Coast and actually 122 students from California. Like I said, we started last September. We just finished our first year. They're going out on clinicals. In January is when our institutional accreditor recognized us as having this new campus here in Santa Maria. There's always a bit of a cart and horse question. You have to have, have something in place before you get recognized as having it, but we do now officially have our recognition as a campus. I just want to note, our students are very community-oriented. They, they are constantly looking for activities to go out and serve and engage in our community. As they just finished their first year, we had a big white coat ceremony that sort of dons, they don their short white coat as they transition out into their clinical year. It's, it's a big milestone in their training, and they are training across the country, but they are training significantly, there's a significant number of them training here locally with the CHC of the Central Coast, which really Ron Castle, the CEO, is the reason that we're here in Santa Maria, and then also at Dignity Marion. And we have a medical school in Arizona. We actually have two medical schools at our university, but our, our medical school in Arizona also sends students out to the Central Coast, and they train at Marion Dignity alongside our, our PA students, and they actually engage, this is a picture of them engaging at a community event, actually with some pre-med students from, from Cal Poly, I believe. We have lots of opportunities to support the university. I'm most passionate about opportunities to support our students in their community outreach efforts, and then creating student emergency funds. As I said, over 60% of them come from economically disadvantaged backgrounds, and, and this is an opportunity for them to change generational wealth opportunities for their families, and, and many of them come in. It's a significant challenge to meet the financial needs, and so we're looking for any kind of help we can, we can gather on that front. We do have some funding and naming opportunities. I have some information about that here. If you see me, I'd, I'd love to share that with you. But really, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to be here in Santa Maria on the Central Coast. We're, we are thrilled to be here, and, and I'm happy to entertain any questions that you might have. Thank you so much.
Any questions from the council? Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have been involved with this project since you guys first came to town. Our first meeting was at the library, and it's, it's one of the most exciting things that has happened since I've been on as council, I think. Well, this weekend, this past weekend, I just happened to attend a, a function down in Santa Barbara. It was our, my class reunion, and this lady came walking up to me, and she, she recognized me from television interviews and whatnot, and she mentioned to me that her daughter had just completed, and this is my fault, the PA system here in Santa Maria, and I thought, the heck is that? You know, and so I listened to, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't mess it all up at the same time. So I listened to her for a while and then figured out that she was talking about AT Still, and she could not say enough about your organization. She was so positive. Her daughter was one of the original graduates. She's gone now, I want to say it's in Illinois somewhere, and she's doing her year there. She, she's a local Santa Barbara person. She is so, so excited that her daughter was able to come to Santa Maria and facilitate some sort of certification with AT Still. And, and I just thought, how fortuitous is that? You know, I mean, it was just an absolutely fantastic, heartwarming conversation, and I puffed my chest out and said, well, I was, I was part of bringing them here, you know? But it was just so exciting to hear her talk about it, and this was totally unplanned, and she was just so gracious about your organization. I just want to pass that on.
I appreciate you sharing that. Thank you.
Ms. Waterfield?
Yes. I was talking to my sister in Arizona earlier, and we were talking about the agenda, and I said, we have AT Still's coming in for a presentation, and she goes, really? She goes, well, let me tell you about AT Still's. Her son, who is Wilbur K. Freeman III, ended up going to AT Still's. He's a graduate. He started in 2011, 2015, and he is now in Kansas City finishing his fellowship in electric, electrical physicist, where, a pacemaker where he goes and recharges everybody. So from, from, from your school, he is now certified DO in internal medicine, cardiology, and soon-to-be EP, and his fellowship ends in Kansas in July, and he's already been hired in Arizona, back in Arizona, and she just wants me to tell you, thank you very much for this school, because she says it's amazing. He has excelled, and he loves what he does, because at nine years old, he had a pacemaker put in him, and he was so curious, ever since a little boy, what was going on? He started out as an electrical engineer and found that to be boring, and he says, no, he goes, I want to know more about the human body and my pacemaker. AT Still's helped him along the way and got him to where he is. So thank you, thank you very much.
My marketing director will be calling you tomorrow morning.
Absolutely. You know what? And I can put him together with, with my sister, and you guys can do your magic, because it is, it's, he's just a fabulous young man. He's 40 years old, and he's got a wonderful, wonderful career. And she said that he loves what he does. He never works a day in his life. He just loves it all.
It's a beautiful story. Thank you for sharing, and, and there are, there are lots of those stories across the university, and, and I just encourage, we really do want to recruit and, and educate more students from the Central Coast, because we know that people are most likely to go practice where they're from, and, and we know that there's a need here. And so as more people know about us and try to identify sending local students to us, we will prioritize looking at them so that we can, we can meet those local needs.
Well, absolutely, and what you offer skies a limit. So anybody here, any, any of these young kids sitting here listening to this, you could do this. It's right in your backyard, you know? So this is just very beneficial for everybody.
Hope to see all of you.
Yes.
Not too distant in the future.
You're a Madam Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Cordero.
That's amazing that two of us that have no connection from different parts of the country have been influenced by the footprint that your organization is putting out there on the medical community. That's, that's amazing. So I, I, we can go nowhere from, but up from here, and we certainly appreciate you being here.
Well, I, I was there in the beginning when we started the discussion on this, and, and many, many times, the city gets in discussions on different levels for different things, and we're always competing with other communities, and it's really hard to compete with San Diego. But thank you for picking our community, and we have a wonderful community, but, but more than that, that gives the opportunity for our kids. So many of them are underserved, and this is a great community. And I, and I think your group, when they came here, was able to see that. And I, I was really excited when you guys picked us, and I thought, oh, okay, I guess maybe we did something right here, and, and we were, you know, I felt we were very welcoming and we wanted you here, but it's, it's good for our community. Thank you so much.
As our leadership tells it, San Diego's got nothing on Santa Maria, and, and they were very welcoming. I, you know, I think he gets a lot of credit rightfully, Ron Castle from CHC, the Central Coast.
Yes, he does.
Really was, I think, the impetus to, he knew we were looking in San Diego, and he said, you know what? I know your mission. I know what you want to do. You should actually do that here in Santa Maria. Come, come up north and, and look around and talk to the people and see this community, because you can, you can fulfill your mission here better than you can there. And, and he was right.
Absolutely.
Do you know what I found very interesting? Because I spoke at the first class that came in, and how professionally dressed these kids were. They looked serious. They have to be serious. It's a two-year program. You're not going to be messing around and partying on Friday and Saturday nights. You've, you've got a, you know, you have to be focused, which I thought was very interesting, all the kids that were there. But how many came from out of the state?
Yeah, it's, it is definitely a, a national draw. We have, out of 178 currently enrolled students, I think I said 102 of, 122 of them were from California. So we, I would say of all of the programs at our university, this program draws more, if you want to call within the state local. This program draws more locally than the majority of our other programs. Most of our other programs have more of a national mix. We have a really high percentage of, of students from California, which I, I think is, is wonderful. And again, we have a very intentional holistic admissions process, which is looking to prioritize students who are first-generation college, students who are from economically disadvantaged backgrounds, students who are from historically underrepresented racial, ethnic populations, and students who come to us from community health centers that say, we want this individual to come back and train with us, and then we want to hire them. So that's, that's our model.
Well, my last remark is, if you're busting out of the seams, let us know, because we will be happy to work with you to expand wherever you want to go here in Santa Maria. And I've got our city manager, our attorney, and our mayor agreeing to all of this, and our council. So let us know.
We love it. Thank you.
Yes, no, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have another presentation. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The city council received and filed the Santa Maria Valley Chamber of Commerce Economic Development Commission Visitors Bureau and Tourism Marketing District 2021-2022 Annual Report.
Okay, Mr. Morris, that, that's sort of a hard act to follow you. Is that what you're going to say?
It is, but, but, Madam Mayor, first of all, thank you for the opportunity to be with you all this evening. I, I actually think it's fortuitous that, that we're following Eric and his presentation about AT Still University, because if I were going to choose a case study about what economic development is in a community and what it looks like, the, the journey we've been on with the university and the community is, is perfect, right? So initially, we, we were involved, and, and many other parts of the community were involved in attracting this business to our community. And, and, you know, at a certain point, we did a ribbon cutting, and, and we, you know, had balloons and punch, and we said, job done, right? Except the job's not done at that point. Councilmember Waterfield, you highlighted probably what is our next challenge, which is helping them to grow, right?
Absolutely.
And so they're not going to continue to operate in 25,000 square feet in a shared office facility. At some point, the vision is a campus within our community.
Right.
And so we're going to need to continue to work with them and with other components of our community to find a location and help them navigate the process to grow that business. And, and ultimately, our challenge, which will never end, is to retain that business and its economic impact in our community, right? I suspect that as folks around the region have discovered what we did, that these folks are getting phone calls from folks saying, we can do better, right? And it's our job collectively to continue to demonstrate that that's not true, that the best place for them to fulfill their mission and to serve their population is as a part of our community. So this was actually City Manager Stillwell knocked it out of the park, setting up the agenda tonight, because that, that was really the perfect kind of a case for us to follow this evening. So, so again, we're, we are thrilled to be with you again. We seem to be back often, which is, which is good for us, but tonight, our purpose is to kind of give you an annual look at the work we've been doing on behalf of the community in two areas, tourism and economic development. So to kick it off, I want to play a quick video for you. As the staff tee that up, I want to just share with those that are watching us remotely, that, that the, the audio's not going to play on, on the, for those on Zoom. The, the good news, bad news is it's all just music. There's no words, so you're not really missing any content. And, and this is also available on our website if they really want to go and hear the, you know, public domain music that we put to the video. So, so anyway, we'll, we'll tee up that video, and we'll start with that. So anyway, we'll tee up that video, and we'll start with that. So normally, in this presentation, this is where I would actually introduce the people that are smarter than me and run our economic development and tourism programs, and let them do the rest of the presentation. Unfortunately for you, and perhaps for me, Jennifer, our tourism director, is, I think, maybe the first trade show we've been able to go to in a couple of years now that those things are happening again. And Suzanne is also unavailable, and she runs our economic development. So you're stuck with me tonight. So we'll power through this together. I do want to acknowledge, as you saw at the beginning of the video, the Chamber of Commerce is a public-private partnership organization. We work directly with your team, with the staff of the city. But we also represent the employers in the community. And I think we're now coming close to 900 businesses that are investors in the chamber and help support the mission and the work that we do. And those businesses collectively, I think the employee count now is getting close to 30,000 individuals who work in our community and are part of our extended team. So, and they are represented this evening. I want to just quickly acknowledge three members of our board of directors who are with us this evening. Our chair of our board is Sandra Dickerson, who is the owner of Your People Professionals, an HR your way, an HR services company here in Santa Maria. And one of our vice chairs is an individual you all know well, Ms. Lori Temura, who with Urban Planning Concepts is a member of our executive committee as well. And then another member of our board of directors is Terry Paredes, who's back here. Terry and her family are the owners of the Maya Restaurant, where you can often find me at lunch. So let me start with our economic development work. And really, our strategy is threefold here. You know, first, we want to make sure that we are supporting the businesses that are already here, right? It doesn't make sense to continue to bring new businesses in if the ones that are here can't succeed. So our first level response is to make sure that the businesses that are here have the tools and resources and information they need and the support they need to succeed. Secondly, we are engaged in trying to improve the business climate for all businesses and to set that table so that a business owner has the maximum opportunity possible to be successful. And then third, we want to continue to grow the pie, right? And that comes from both helping those existing businesses to expand and to grow, but also bringing in new businesses like AT Still University and others who have joined the community recently so that they add to the richness and the economic activity and the employment base of our community. Some of our business assistance numbers for this year, 63 businesses formally assisted. I would tell you, that's just the ones we remember to write down. Suzanne and the rest of the staff are taking calls for businesses every day and helping them to connect to resources, to trainings, to financing, to all of the different kinds of requests that they have. Five formal business projects that we were involved in over the last, this past year. Those included some housing projects, including one that is a partnership with Hancock College that is working its way through the prospect, a healthcare facility that is looking to come into our community, a number of retail establishments, as you all have seen and hopefully have had a chance to visit in the last couple of months, and others as well. And one of the things that we're really excited about is that we're finally able to get back out there and go visit businesses in their place of business through our business outreach sessions. And we were able to get a couple of dozen of those in this year and this past year. And we look forward now that everybody's back to work to being able to do many more of those. One of the programs that we're really proud of right now is a program we launched during the pandemic, but we think it has relevance that will go long beyond. And that's an effort to try to help many of our small businesses, in particular, our smaller retailers, improve their presence in the digital world, right? I think one of the things we learned during the pandemic is that businesses that have no relationship with their customers, unless that customer physically walks into their place of business, are at a disadvantage, right? That businesses today need to have a relationship with their customers that exists both in the real world as well as in the digital world. And so we have a program that helps them identify where they are and then connects them to resources at a number of different steps to help move them up that scale so that they're better able to engage in that program. Since launching that, we've had over 800 businesses reach out. We've had a couple of dozen kind of complete that prospect, and we're continuing to work with many others. On the community improvement side, two of the major programs that we're, continue to be involved in, we've talked many times about these, so I won't spend any real time on this. But we are excited about the progress that is being made with the downtown revitalization. That's a couple of years getting to today, and it will be a couple more years before we can call that one complete. But we're excited about the progress that is being made. And we continue to work with the community development and planning teams on the general plan update and look forward to getting engaged in the policy side of that exercise over the next several months. One of the priorities that our board identified for us in the last year was to really deepen our engagement with those businesses in our community where the purveyors speak primarily or exclusively Spanish as part of their business. And so we have created a series of interventions and tools that we're bringing to that table. The first is a Hispanic Business Community. We felt like if we were going to support that community, we needed that effort to be led by businesses in that group. And so we have a volunteer committee now of about 20 businesses that meet with our staff on a regular basis and help identify where we can be of most help and where they need support. As part of that, bringing resources to the table, we have become an affiliate of the California State Hispanic Chambers of Commerce Organization, which brings another set of information and tools and trainings that we can access on behalf of our local businesses. We have entered into a partnership with the Small Business Development Center, and we jointly share a full-time staff person who is fully bilingual and is for both of our organizations, is involved in doing direct outreach to the Hispanic business community, and then to connecting them to consultants and advisors and trainings that will help to elevate their businesses. And then again, as he has time, he's out individually meeting businesses and trying to connect with them one-on-one to identify ways that we can be of help. So this is an area that we're really proud of, and we think over time is going to really help to lift the, you know, the economic activity across our community. We don't do this work alone. As we've said in the past, we're the hub of this project work, but we have partnerships with a number of organizations who influence and help with that work as well. And so you can see some of those listed here, most notably the airport district. And we'll talk a little bit more about that one in a minute. Just a short list of some of the new and expanding businesses that have joined our community just recently. Many of them I think you're familiar with, and hopefully you're spending some of your money in the community at these places. We're excited that it includes both expanding businesses, businesses that see enough success that they think they can sustain a second location, but that we are also continuing to see first-in-the-market entries. So businesses that have not had a presence in our community, recognizing that it is in their interest to do so, and we're happy to help them with that effort. We recognize that Santa Maria does not live in a vacuum, and that we are impacted and have impact on a broader region. And so one of the things that we're very active in is building partnerships and engaging with organizations within our region as well as at the state level. And this slide shares just a couple of those formal relationships that we have. And, you know, they span the spectrum from advocacy so that we can bring a more cohesive voice to that conversation and as well as to workforce development. Because again, we know that folks in our community work in our neighboring communities, and folks who live in our neighboring communities work in our community. And so we're active with those folks as well as then in the traditional economic development activities. We love to celebrate the success of our businesses, and we have been thrilled with the partnership that we've had with the City Council this past year as we have worked through our monthly business, featured business program. And we've been bringing to you a couple of businesses each month. And we look forward to continuing that into the new year. We also have a program with, partnership with the Santa Maria Times, where we do video, little short video stories about local businesses. And those get circulated both through their website as well as through the chambers. Again, trying to tell the stories of some of the businesses that people may drive by and not really know what's going on, you know, inside those walls, right? And what we're learning is there's some really cool things that happen in Santa Maria that more people should know about. I mentioned workforce development, and this was the second priority that our board set for us as an emphasis area for the next couple of years. And so we have been actively working to build a spectrum of programs that really begins to build a pipeline for our workforce needs, right? We know we're not going to change the, you know, the pool of workers, you know, for folks that are looking to hire today overnight, right? That takes time. And so what we're really doing is trying to ensure that over time, we build a pipeline that ensures we continue to make folks available who are ready and able to go to work. We start that at one end of that spectrum with what I think must, might be the most fun program we've ever created, which is our Junior CEO Program. Our third cohort of that group launched last week and had their first little video lessons Monday of this week. There are about 60 young people in that group, all ready to go and to figure out what it means to own a business. And in November, they will be over here across the street at the mall, and you'll have a chance to come over and check out what they've come up with and, you know, maybe put a little money, a little green in their bank accounts to help pay for their future education. That spectrum continues through a number of programs. We do a partnership with our local high schools. One of the new pieces we're doing there. We often do programs for the students, but we figured out that we could have a lot more lasting impact if we can get good information to their teachers. And so working with the county education office, this month, we are starting our, hosting our first Tours for Teachers program. We have a group of teachers that are doing a business finance day. And part of that is they're working with your staff on some programs. And then there will be a second program this month looking at our agriculture industry. And we'll be looking to do more of those in the springtime. And then, of course, that program then leads all the way up through to our Leadership Santa Maria Valley, which is our program to build and strengthen our working, you know, emerging leaders within our workforce. And that program also launched in August. They have their second full-day session coming up in about a week. Actually, I believe it's this Friday. They'll be over at the police station and the fire department, learning about public safety careers and, you know, issues and solutions in our community. There are about 20 folks in that class. I believe we're up to, oh, probably 300 or 400 folks that have gone through the program over the years, helping to learn what it is that makes our community work. And so on the economic development, what's next? Well, obviously, we're going to continue our business assistance efforts, working with the existing businesses. We're keeping the foot on the pedal for the downtown project. The Skyway Collective is a project at the south end of the community that is coming together really nicely. And there's a new concept that will be part of that that we're really excited to see open up in our community in the next couple of months. It will be kind of an incubator for restaurants and helping to take folks from, you know, maybe a food truck into something a little more permanent. So we're very excited about what that will look like and how that will come together. And we'll continue to do our regional economic development. And then the last piece, the other piece that we're going to really put some new energy into this year is partnering with the airport. Last year, we partnered with them on a marketing study that helped us to identify potential businesses or business groups that need access to an airport as part of their business model. Now, to be clear, while we continue to work with the airport board to try to attract airline service so that we can launch our vacations from the airport, this effort is really designed to put people to work at and around the airport, you know, on the industrial ends of the airport controls. So what we're looking to do there is launch careers. We'll continue to work on launching vacations, but we're also going to try to find a way to put people to work. So that's where we wanted to share on economic development. I want to turn quickly to our tourism. And again, this is probably, you know, when people ask what we do for a living, this is the part that we get really excited about because we can tell folks that we get to brag about the community that we all choose to live in, and somebody pays us to do it. How does life get any better than that, right? So our strategy on the tourism program is really two strands. The first is to catalyze visits to the community. We want to convince people who are looking for a place to spend their vacation or their professional development time to that the Santa Maria Valley is a place they ought to consider and that they should come and spend their dollars there. The second half of that is to really champion that visitor experience. So while we're trying to convince them to come, we're also working on, behind the scenes, to make sure that there are things to do and that the staff that will greet them are aware of what those things are and that they feel well-hosted and they can find their way around our community so that that experience that they bought it from us meets their expectations or exceeds it, and they go home and tell their friends what a great place Santa Maria was to come and vacation, right? So we're really trying to do both of those. On the catalyzing piece, our strategy is really very simple. It's to put the Santa Maria Valley in front of as many eyeballs as we possibly can, whether that's through advertising or articles in magazines, through our social media, where we're very active, or through email newsletters that people sign up for, and to get them from there to our website, santamariavalley.com. And that's where we think we can really get them excited about everything that there is to offer. And from there, our goal is to move them to one of the websites of a local hotel so that they can book a room, as well as maybe to information about activities or events or attractions within our community. So that's the funnel, right? We put a lot of information out into the world to get people to that website so that we can get them to our local businesses. How are we doing on that? That website in the last, in the 12 months under this fiscal year had over 330,000 distinct visits, which we think is a really strong year, particularly as people are beginning to travel again, right? And that hasn't fully hit its mark. Again, remember that funnel was to take all of those people and get them talking to one of our hotels. 7,300 times, we handed off a customer to a hotel that we can track. And we're sure that there are many others that just leave our site and go to their favorite booking engine and do that as well. But these are ones that click directly from our website to the Santa Maria Inn or the Holiday Inn or one of the other hotels' websites. So we think that that scheme is working, and as travel continues to rebound in the state, we look to those numbers to continue to grow. One of the ways we get in front of people is we are trying to engage folks that are considered influencers, right? So I'm sure many of you have folks out there that you follow online. I don't really do this. I'm not, maybe not their target audience. But that seems to be one way that many people now get their information, right? Is to follow the advice of people that they have found that they trust. And so we try to find those people and convince them. And so, we try to find those people and convince them why they should like us and tell their friends about the Santa Maria Valley. We are thrilled that we are, that local events are coming back online in our community. We have a program through the Visitors Bureau where we provide nominal financial support as well as a really robust marketing support package to many of these events. And you can see here, Alyssa, the ones that we were able to reengage with in the last part of, you know, over the spring and early summer. And we're, we know that those numbers will continue to grow as our nonprofits and other organizations in the community get back to planning and hosting their events that make up such a rich part of our cultural fabric here in the community. One of the fun things we do every year in January is we celebrate Restaurant Month. We think that there are some really great places in the community to experience good food and beverage in Santa Maria. And so, we do a month-long program there. This last January, we had, I believe it was 15 local restaurants that signed up. The deal was they had to offer something on their menu that cost $20.22. This year, it'll be $20.23. Very creative, right? You get the idea? But they had to offer some menu item that fit that scheme and then we market them and try to drive traffic to them. A sub-part of that program is our craft cocktail contest, so we invite the local beverage purveyors to come up with a unique signature cocktail and we have a contest. We send out some judges into the community to go and vote on which of those they like the best. And then, we do a, you know, kind of a public vote so that everybody gets in.
Excuse me, Mr. Morris, but you've never called.
I know.
I think I just recruited a number of judges, so excellent. We did, the first time we did that, we only did it for a week and we discovered that, you know, judging all of those in one week was not safe, so we moved it. So, the winners this year, the fan favorite was the Salty Brigade Kitchen and our judges' pick was a beverage out at the Maker's Sun in Los Alamos. So, we were excited to see those. We're also thrilled that our partnership with you all on the Santa Maria Wine Trolley is back up and running. Hopefully, you've seen that out. It runs Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays. My staff are trying to convince myself and Mr. Unguiano right now that we should extend the season as it was supposed to wind up here in another couple of weeks, but the ridership is strong enough that they think it makes sense to do that. So, we're looking at maybe extending that for another couple of weeks as long as the weather holds, right? When we look at our advertising, we do a couple of different kind of campaigns each year. One of the ones that we thought was kind of fun this last year, we called it our spice campaign. We tried to take a little bit of kind of a tongue-in-cheek, little jab at some of our neighbors. And so, you can see some samples of the ads here, you know, trying to highlight that while we love our neighbors, we think we have a competitive advantage and why people should come and spend some time with us. We decided to really pound that point home latterly in May and June when, you know, the inflation numbers really started to tick up and people started to get concerned about, gee, it's coming on to summer and am I going to be able to afford a vacation? And we wanted to make it very clear that yes, you can if it includes Santa Maria, right? So, we have a page on our website that takes publicly available data, right, from things like TripAdvisor and, you know, the restaurant websites. So, it takes and shows for us and several of our competitor cities what that hotel room would cost you and what that dinner for two and maybe a wine tasting experience would cost you. And what we discovered was that Santa Maria Valley compared to any of the other central coast, they all cost two to three times more than the same experience in Santa Maria. And when we threw Napa in just for fun, it was like nine and a half times more expensive. So, the message is if you're looking for a place your family can do vacation, even with high, you know, inflation, Santa Maria Valley is where you need to be. We talked about public relations. This is an effort to get stories written about us. Again, some of those influencers do that, others are professional writers who work for different magazines. 28 articles during the year. Some of the publications that we were really proud to be featured in, USA Today, Parade Magazine, The New York Times, and the Associated Press, among others. The marketing folks out there have a formula on how they can figure out what that's all worth to us. We had to buy the equivalent advertising and it's significant. So, we're excited about the fact that people out there loved to write stories about our barbecue and many other stories. This would happen to be another barbecue story. And I mentioned, we do an awful lot on social media and that's where you can find us if you're looking for information or more importantly, if you're sharing with your friends and family who do not live here, where they can get information about us. You can find us on all of these social media platforms. So, what's next on the tourism side? We're going to continue working on that influencer and try to get folks out there talking about us. We're going to refresh that spice campaign again and continue to have some fun with that. We're launching a new mini campaign on digital media and I'm going to show you, for the, you're going to be the first to see the first couple of little mini videos that go with that. We're refreshing our print guides. And one of the big undertakings is we're really looking to develop a full strategy around how do we convince more folks like our friends at West Coast Customs to bring large events to our community? We think that there's an awful lot of room for growth for us in that space. And so, before I open up for any questions, the staff's going to help me. One more time, we're going to play two more really quick 15-second videos.
There you go. I believe it's muted.
I know it, doesn't it?
So, there are a series of these that will start to appear in people's social media feeds as they connect with, or they're searching for things that would include keywords that bring them to us. So, with that, Madam Mayor, I will take any questions from the council?
Any questions from the council? No, Mr. Escobedo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Hey, Glenn, I just, do the videos are in-house or who's in charge of those videos?
So, our, on the tourism side, we use an outside professional agency to do the production of that work, yeah.
Because they're pretty well, pretty well done. So, yeah, I've been watching the local businesses spotlight series particularly.
The local business, those spotlights that we do, we actually use a young man here in the community to do that video.
Great.
Tourism stuff's done by, out of the community, but all the local stuff's done here by local people.
Yeah, especially those, those are pretty, I think they're really well done and really professional. I like it. And also have a question about the, it's the paid student internship program. What is that about?
So, that's a partnership we have also with the county office of education. And they have grant funds and other resources that they can help prepare high school students. We then bring the businesses to the table and they connect them. The business does pay a fixed fee to help underwrite some of the costs and the students are paid for their work. I think it works out to about, I want to say it's a 60 or 80-hour work experience. And then, the business can choose to keep them if they love them, but that's the formal experience.
Yeah, no, that's, I think that's great because I remember when I was in high school, I worked a lot for free because, you know, you're trying to earn experience because it's hard for a company or business to hire you if they don't know what you've done. So, I think it's a, that's a really great program. Thank you.
Yeah. I would point out just really quickly while you mentioned the videos, if you go to the santamariavalley.com website, all of the photographs that we have used in our marketing, the tourism marketing, all of those videos, they are available. They're available for free to the community to use. We would love to see, you know, folks that are talking about Santa Maria using really good, high-quality images about the community, so they're, we make them available.
Oh, by the way, sorry, sorry. Just one thing about the influencer side. Last year, I follow, I do follow Mark Green, that's his name, he's all over the world traveling and moving around. He has like 9. something million followers. It's all about foot, foot, foot traveling. And he came to Santa Barbara and in that video, they talk about the tri-tip. And I was disappointed when I went, because when you compare the, you know, the tri-tip that was on that video to the one that we offer here in Santa Maria, I was like, no, man. Actually, I sent a message, never got a reply, but you should come to Santa Maria. So, I don't know, just throw that potential influencer.
Oh, so close, right?
Yeah, really close. You could have just jumped a little bit. Thank you.
Ms. Waterfield.
Yes, I would make a suggestion that when you work with the airport, I think this would help AT Steel's very much if we could bring major airlines here because we want to get people in here from all over the place. We don't want them going to Santa Barbara or San Luis Obispo. So, please make that a priority for the airport because in my 37 years here, all we've got was a new terminal and a longer runway, zippo. So, I'm just very passionate about that.
I hear you, Lyndon. We actually are doing a visit to one of the airlines the first weekend in December, so we'll be carrying that message out again.
Make it happen. Make it happen.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. That was great. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, folks.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to move an item on the agenda round because I have a lot of young people and I know you guys want to get home and do homework. So, so, I am going to move 5C up right now and, but I'm glad you were here to see the chamber do their presentation and you were here to see AT Steel do their presentation. So, anyway, yes, will you read that item, Madam Clerk?
Yes. The city council will consider an ordinance to promote the reduction, excuse me, the reduction of underage drinking and marijuana use by imposing a civil fine on persons responsible for gatherings where alcohol and marijuana is consumed by and served to or in possession of underage persons.
And the staff report is to be made by Assistant City Manager Andrew Hackelman. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. So, before you this evening is the consideration of an ordinance, a social host ordinance. A number of years have been spent researching this ordinance and a lot of collaboration's gone into this by city staff, including our city attorney, director of community development, Chen Ying, as well as our police chief and others. We've also had our mayor, Mayor Patino, as part of this group, as well as community members from the team Fighting Back Santa Maria. I think many of them or some of them at least aren't here this evening. I'm just going to provide a really brief overview of what this effort has resulted in and what's before you for consideration this evening. So, I want to talk to you tonight about, you know, the purpose of the ordinance, the elements of the ordinance, and the recommendation to you, the council, this evening. So, the purpose of this ordinance is education for our community. It's also to communicate the values of our community to our residents and others, and it's to promote public safety and health of our, of our youth in our community. And it's also importantly to prevent youth alcohol and drug use. So, the ordinance is really straightforward. It's, it really doesn't create new laws, but it, but it does focus priorities for the city and for communication like I was discussing earlier on the previous slide. And what it comes down to, it's a couple of pages, but I've distilled it down to just a couple of elements here, which is, you know, violation occurs when a responsible person allows a gathering to take place where alcohol and/or illegal drugs are being unlawfully consumed by minors. And violations are infractions under our municipal code punishable as provided in chapters, chapter 16 of the municipal code. And there are fines potentially associated with that. And just by way of definitions here, responsible person is any person regardless of age, business or entity that is responsible for creating, causing, or permitting a gathering on a premises where minors consume alcohol and/or illegal drugs. And a minor, under the definitions in this draft ordinance, is any person under 21 years of age. And finally, the recommendation to the council this evening is to approve the first reading of the social host ordinance. And with that, this concludes staff's presentation to the council. If there are any questions, we're here to answer them for you.
Any questions of Mr. Hackelman?
I have a question.
Yes.
And it goes back to reasonable person. What if they claim they're not a responsible person? What if they claim they're irresponsible? How do we, I mean, they, I'm sure the chief has come up with stuff like this before and how do we fight that?
Well, I think I'll defer to the city attorney if he would like to provide an input on that.
Again, what we're endeavoring to do is identify those people who are, who are giving active permission as opposed to tacit permission. So, a circumstance where you have an out-of-town parent is different than where you have evidence of an in-town parent who purchases alcohol for a end-of-year party or some other kind of event. So, we'll be looking for indicia along those lines. And candidly, if we, if we find a gathering of this nature, it probably will not be that hard to find the evidence to support the infraction.
Yeah. I like the active person part of it, participant.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Hackelman? Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was going through the background part of the, this ordinance and it talks about providing, it says, "Social host ordinance are created to provide occasion, communicate community values, and discourage and deter adults from providing alcohol and illegal drugs to minors." So, they use the illegal drug. And then, on the actual agenda, it says where alcohol and marijuana is consumed or served by. So, one of, I don't know if it's possible to change where alcohol and illegal drugs can be, you know, if that can be changed in the, in also in the words proposed for the ordinance.
Council member, are you referring to the agenda, so in the ordinance itself?
Yeah, because in the part with the 5C, it says that a responsible gathering where alcohol and marijuana, but if you click on the ordinance of social host regulations, it says illegal drugs.
Absolutely.
So, I don't know if it would be appropriate to put where alcohol and illegal drugs are consumed?
Absolutely. And so, our intent with the ordinance, we definitely want to make sure that it's alcohol and illegal drugs.
Right.
Yeah. In, on section C-15.01, it says the reduction of underage drinking, marijuana, and illegal drug use. So, it's included there?
Yes. I believe Councilmember Escobedo was talking about the agenda item itself.
Yes.
So, we will, we will make a note for the second reading that it would incorporate that.
And the ordinance covers it.
The ordinance covers it, but we'll make sure that the agenda item description, it covers it next time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak or written correspondence?
Yes, Madam Mayor, council members. Staff has received 18 written communications from various community groups and residents supporting the social host regulations. They were forwarded via email to council members earlier today and copies have been provided on the dais this evening. Each of the communications have also been posted to the agenda and will be referenced in the minutes. And we have seven speakers here in chambers and none on Zoom.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Edwin Weaver, followed by Andrea, Andrea Martinez, followed by Audrey Gussar.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. So great to be here finally to talk about this important issue. I want to thank Attorney Hackelman and Chief Schneider and Officer Lara for all their hard work doing the work to get this before you. As the Tobacco Use Prevention Education Coordinator for the county, we ask students in fifth, seventh, ninth, and 11th grade every two years, where do you get your, if you consume alcohol or marijuana or drugs, where do you get them? And many of them say they get them from their homes or a social event. And so this ordinance will allow us to have a educational campaign in the community to talk to parents to say, hey, you know, we understand everybody wants to celebrate life and have a, have a party. That is great. We liked our barbecue, obviously, here in Santa Maria. But let's keep alcohol, marijuana, and drugs away from kids during these events. You, as the host, should be responsible for the consumption of that. And let's wait until all the persons there of legal age before we start introducing these products into our community, communities' children. And so I thank you and ask you to support the latest ordinance.
Thank you. Andrea Martinez, followed by Audrey Gussar, followed by Emiliano Diaz.
Good evening, Mayor Patino and council members. My name is Andrea Martinez de Jesus, and I am a student at Santa Maria High School. I am a senior. And while being a student at Santa Maria High School, I have seen a lot of marijuana usage as well as alcohol usage. I know it's a big deal in our community, and it is something this social host ordinance would really benefit our community by reducing that chance of those youth and teenagers here in Santa Maria using marijuana and alcohol and any other legal substance. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Audrey Gussar, followed by Emiliano Diaz, followed by Crystal Martinez.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Audrey Gussar, and I work with Fighting Back Santa Maria Valley. I'm a prevention specialist, and I specialize in STD education and prevention. In the year I've been with Fighting Back, I have heard many stories from the teens that I work with. Some of those I've spoken to admitted to being high or drunk, that they just go with the flow when it came to sex. Often, they say they either don't care about wearing condoms or even forget how to put one on. Often, they say they either, I'm sorry, some have spoken about regrets after having sex while under the influence. Some of these teens were also so scared to even get tested for STDs or pregnancies. And a few of those teens have even tested positive for STDs once in juvenile hall. I have spoken to a 14-year-old who had unprotected sex while high. Because of this choice, she had to make an adult decision as a child about keeping the child or not. I spoke to another young girl who told me how she would go to parties and how often she would see young girls being taken advantage of because they were under the influence of alcohol or drugs. Often, or unfortunately, this is the reality of for teens in our community. The more access they have to alcohol and drugs, the more access, or the more chances that they have to make these unsafe choices. Some of these choices can affect their future forever. Thank you.
Thank you. Emiliano Diaz, followed by Crystal Martinez, followed by Fidelio Piñada.
Buenas tardes, Mayor Patiño, and to the members of the council. My name is Emiliano. I'm here for the new law that needs to be approved. I agree that this law should be approved because I don't want my children to drink alcohol or drug like when I was a kid. Because I don't want my children to be like that, because I see the San Maria community. Many young people are addicted, alcoholics, all of those. I look at them badly. I look at them badly. So I'm here to support this law that they want to repeal. And I hope it's approved because I'd like it to be approved, right? So that there won't be alcohol, there won't be drugs, and above all, the parents should also stop drinking. Like I did, I drank a lot before, but thanks to a program that I'm supporting and thanks to that program, I stopped drinking, I stopped drinking, I stopped fighting in the street. Thanks to that program, I'm supporting that program to help the community. I want everything to adhere to the program that I'm in, but it's not easy. I've talked to people, I've sent a message, but it's not easy. But we're making a fight. We're making an effort to make everyone stop drinking like I did. Thank God I'm 6 years old and I'm fighting day by day. The program that we're supporting, this program is international service for the state. As you can see, this one I have, there's a rally for Oregon-Washington. We have to go all the way to do the rally so that everyone can see that they can live differently, outside of alcohol, outside of drugs, and educate our children. So we're making an effort to fight for the community, not only Santa Maria, but in all the states, even Mexico as a whole. So we're making an effort, and I'm here to support this new law that needs to be repealed. And I hope it's repealed because I'd like to listen to it if it's approved. So I'm here to support this new law that needs to be repealed. Thank you.
Muchas gracias, señor.
Just a brief translation. He is all for it. He is six years sober, and he's working with the program. And he would like no alcohol or illegal drugs for his kids, and he wants all the parents in the community to set an example for the young community. Just a brief translation. Thank you.
Would, would you do us a favor, please, and thank him for having the fortitude to come? And encourage him to contact others and let the language barrier not be a problem for people not coming to a council meeting.
I will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Crystal Martinez, followed by Fidelio Piñada, followed by Eva Avila.
Good evening, Mayor Patino and council members. I'm Crystal Martinez, and I'm from Pioneer Valley High School. Research shows that marijuana use can have permanent effects on the developing brain when it begins in adolescence, especially with regular or heavy use. Studies also show that about 1 in 10 marijuana users will become addicted. For people who start using before the age of 18, that number rises to 1 in 6. In Santa Maria School District, 8% of 7th graders, 18% of 9th graders, and 29% of 11th graders reported using marijuana at least once in their lifetime, as published in the California Healthy Kids Survey. We need to change this. Unlike adults, the teen brain is actively developing and often will not fully develop until the mid-20s. Marijuana use during this period can harm the developing brain. According to the CDC, teens who use marijuana may experience difficulty thinking and problem-solving with memory and learning, impaired coordination, and difficulty maintaining attention. Underage marijuana can, use can also lead to a decline in school performances, increase risk of mental health issues, and higher risk for impaired driving, and the potential for addiction. The young people in Santa Maria need the social host ordination to help protect us from the dangers of underage marijuana use. Please provide this policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Fidelio Piñada, and followed by Eva Avila.
Good evening, Mayor Patino and council members. My name is Fidelio Piñada Lopez, and I'm a 7th grader at Fessler Junior High School. As many of you know, alcohol is one, is the most commonly used and abused drug in the United States. According to the National Research Council and Institute of Medicine, on average, underage drinkers consume more drinks when drinking than adult drinkers. In our school locally, the data shows 12% of 7th graders, 30% of 9th graders, and 41% of 11th grader report using alcohol at least once in their lifetime. This is a problem, especially because the consequence of underage drinking damages the developing brain. The CDC claims youth who drink alcohol are more likely to experience physical and sexual assault, a higher risk for suicide and homicide, alcohol-related car crash, memory problems, and even death from alcohol poisoning. The city of Santa Maria needs to social host ordinance to help protect youth from underage drinking. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Eva Avila, followed by Alondra Castillo.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council members. My name is Eva Avila. I'm here from the Tobacco Prevention Program and Cannabis Education with the Department of Public Health of Santa Barbara County. I'm also a proud resident of Santa Maria. This city in Santa Maria has made strides to protect the youth and has prioritized supporting prevention. In 2019, the city of Santa Maria adopted a flavor ban to reduce access to harmful flavored tobacco products, such as flavored nicotine. A social host ordinance would be another intervention that we can implement as a city to protect the children of Santa Maria. Tobacco prevention and cannabis education supports prevention efforts and supports this proposed social host ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Alondra Castillo.
Good evening, Mayor Patino and council members. My name's Alondra Castillo, and I go to Fessler Junior High in 7th grade. In a recent study, students reported that alcohol and marijuana are very easily or fairly easy to get. So we know youth can get these substances. But where are they getting them? In the recent California Healthy Kids Survey, students reported the most common places they get alcohol and marijuana is at parties, from friends, or in their own home. This is why a social host ordinances is necessary. We can limit the access youth have to these harmful substances and eliminate, reduce user usage. Over 150 cities and counties have already adopted these ordinances and are now updating them to include marijuana and other inlet drugs. Our county has a social host ordinance and, and surrounding cities as well. It's time the city of Santa Maria adopts a social host ordinance to protect youth and send a strong community-wide message that underage alcohol and marijuana usage is unhealthy, unsafe, and unacceptable. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll bring this back to the council for discussion and our motion.
I have a, I have a comment, Madam Mayor. And I just, I'm just so impressed with all you young children out there. You guys are fighting for your life. You're fighting for a healthy community, and you're fighting for your family and friends. And I just want to tell you how much I respect you and how much I appreciate each and every one of you. This is amazing. A few years ago, when the state went and put marijuana on the ballot, the mayor and I went to Atlanta, and we went on a, a study session in regards with what marijuana does to a brain, especially children, and I call you children, and I know you're not, young adults, what it does, because your brains are still growing, and what marijuana will do to that brain if you continue to use it. And, you know, boys' brains are slower than girls' brains. That's just the way God made it. So it's not, it's just a fact. But it does affect the brain, and it does stifle learning, and it does stifle everything in your life that you want to be. So I'm just appreciate the direction you're going in, the direction you're going in. You could be at AT stills and going into medical school and doing whatever you want to do, because you can do it. You're here. You can do it. I am so proud of you guys. And yes, I will definitely support this item. Thank you so much. I just want to thank you all.
Any other comments? Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I do, I do share that recognition to the, to the young adults. I think it's a, it's important. Maybe one day you guys, I mean, I think that you, you can be an agent of change. You can change the way things get done, and you come in here advocating for something that matters to you and for your people around you. One day, maybe you can run for city, city council or mayor or more. I think it's a, it's important for you to care about your community. So thank you for doing that. And I'd like to refer to Emiliano. Muchas gracias por compartir su experiencia. And more than personally, for something so difficult, the value that you had to come and share it in front of all and the audience. That's admirable. So thank you very much. It's an example for the parents who are watching from their homes. Muchas gracias.
Mr. Correia?
I want to comment specifically on the commercial that you guys are put out on television with the driving, not driving under the influence and so forth. Did you do that, Edwin?
I didn't, no. But my team did, yes.
Yeah, I, I just think that's a great commercial. I was gonna comment to the mayor, because I know that she has a, a fond feeling for the, for, for the Fighting Back, and, and it's just a great, great commercial and has a loud message. So thank you very much, and I too will be supporting this.
Thank you. You know, and I, I just want to comment. I think it's really important. I think we, in the room and those people watching, have seen with California voting to legalize marijuana, we know what it's done in Colorado. But we knew at the time it was doing bad things, especially to the adolescent brain. And I, I know Colorado right now is just up in arms about all the problems they're having to go through, and we'll, we'll be there. And it's just, I, I just shudder to think if they pass this nationwide. And I know I've had people come and say, well, I, I smoke marijuana, and look at me. And I go, yeah, you know, look at you. And it's always sort of sad, because you just don't need that in your life. But anyway.
I have one more comment.
Yes, Ms. Waterfield?
I, I just have one more comment to make, because it was something that Audrey brought up, and I believe Crystal did too, in regards to when, you know, you do drugs or you do alcohol. And this is a good age to talk to you about, and it was the sex situation, the, the situations you get into. You know, don't go there, is all I'm gonna say, is, you know, virginity is something that is very sacred. And so when people try to encourage you to do something that you can't undo, your remark should be, "At any time, I can be like you, but you can never be like me." And you hold that close and always keep that close to your heart, because drugs and all that kind of stuff will just mess your minds up. So this is, this is grandmother talking.
Ms. Serna.
Thank you. I too want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues and thank all of the young people that are here tonight, the families, supporting this social host ordinance. I believe that it's imperative that we as a community come together and really fight back against the alcohol and tobacco industry who have been notorious for targeting minorities, primarily black and Latino communities, young people, and so we need to do all we can to really stand together and fight against, I guess, against these industries who are perpetually targeting our young people, our young people of color. And, and the statistics don't lie, and so I, I too, like I said, want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues and thank all of the young people that are here tonight, and I look forward to, to continuing on these, on this effort. And I think that, you know, it's not often that all five of us align on, on an issue, but I'm, I'm really proud of that.
This is very important, absolutely.
I'm really proud of this tonight.
Absolutely. With that, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a recommendation that the city council introduce a first reading and continue to a future reading for second reading and adoption and ordinance amending Title VI of the Santa Maria Municipal Code to add new chapters six through 15 social host regulations. And something I would ask of our police chief is that we would thoroughly enforce this. I mean, we've got Halloween parties coming up, we've got the holidays coming up, everyone's going to be doing something. But if, you know, the officers can be out there, they know what's going on, let's enforce it, let's get the word out, and let's make sure that you will be, you will be charged and fined for, for these actions if you're caught providing to underage kids.
I second the motion.
Wait, Mr. Cordero, that's okay. Go ahead. You were going to second or you wanted to talk?
I would just say, I would just say to you that we, we won't be able to do that for Halloween because there's 30 days to wait for the ordinance.
You're right, you're right, okay. We'll get the message out, yeah. We'll get the message out.
I have a first and a second, and I think it's really, that you kids need to go back to your schools.
Yeah.
And get that out on your social media. Hey, mom and dads, you know, be, be on alert because you can't be doing this anymore. You can't have the parties at your house anymore. And so that's really important. And, and I'm sure the news media will pick up on this, so people reading the newspaper will also know that, that we do have a social host ordinance in Santa Maria. Any further discussion? Hearing done. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
And Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye. Thank you. Now you can all go home and do your homework.
Great job, Edward.
You're dismissed. Thank you. Yeah, this is great. Awesome. Wish we had more things like that.
I had salad and butternut squash soup.
Ooh, where'd you get the butternut squash?
Eder made it, my husband made it.
He did? Oh, I love that. So if you guys get a Vitamix mixer, you can make that soup in the mix and it comes out hot. And it's, you use a fresh butternut, oh my god, it's so good. Yes, oh my god, I love butternut soup.
Madam Clerk, next we have a regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the tile?
The city council will receive a presentation and provide direction to staff regarding a proposed general plan amendment and zone change for Paradiso residential development.
Staff report is to be made by Community Development Director, Mr. Eam.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. We have a conceptual review for a proposed residential development. It's called Paradiso. And I just want to emphasize, because this is a conceptual review, it's not a formal application. We haven't, we have not yet gone through an extensive review process like we would for formal applications. This is just a proposed concept, but we want to bring it before the city council for your direction. So the property under review here is 15 acres located at the northeast, not quite the corner, but it's north of East Main Street and east of Sway. It's 15 acres of property currently designated a single-family residential. And so it's R1 8,000. What that indicates is that the single-family lots would be approximately 8,000 square feet in size. What this reflects in density, it's about four homes per acre. There's a, we have a concept proposal for R2 and R3. There's a northern portion of the property that is being proposed for R2, which would accommodate duplex projects or the subdivision accommodating for duplex residential units. There's a southern portion of the property that is being proposed for R3, and that would accommodate a senior apartment complex. The division of the land areas, the northern area would be about nine acres, 9.32 acres of the total 15, and the southern portion would be 5.9 acres accommodating the R3 senior apartments. This is a diagram showing the proposed concept project. And so to the north, you can see a subdivision layout of 90 individual single-family lots. But again, this would accommodate, the proposed design concept is for duplexes, so there would be an attached wall between the two residential units. And to the south is the senior apartment complex. The applicant and the applicant's representatives are here and they, they may have slides that show this in a little bit greater detail. This concludes staff's presentation. Again, this is a conceptual review for Paradiso residential development. This concludes staff's presentation. Welcome, any questions you may have?
Chung, I have a question. What is the age of seniors?
Typically, senior projects are 55 and over. The applicant can provide greater clarification if that's not correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's currently zoned for what again?
Single-family residential.
And correct me if I'm wrong, please, the state has no influence on single-family residents, right?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Cordero, there are various state regulations in place that do affect and influence our single-family zoning. The most pertinent one would be the laws regarding ADUs. So in any of our single-family zoning districts, a property owner can build an ADU on their property, thereby essentially making it two units on a single-family lot.
And if you change, if we change the zoning, what happens to the state influence then?
The ADU laws also apply in multifamily settings. We usually see them proposed for single-family lots, but there are provisions for the addition of ADUs in multifamily settings.
I guess my, my reason for asking those questions is if we change it, the, it becomes more complex for us and we have less control, less local control over, is that correct?
Well, this is a proposed concept to change the zoning from R1 to a combination of R2 and R3.
Yes.
So that's, that's our local land use and zoning. The, the state statutes, we don't have any control over. They will imply in some manner, whether it's, at least with the ADU laws, R1, R2, and R3. Again, we mostly see them in R1. We mostly see conversion of garages to ADUs or detached ADUs in the backyard. We don't see them often for multifamily settings, but there are provisions that provide those accommodations to the property owners.
I, I came here tonight kind of prepared to go against this because we've approved so many of them over the last several years, but there's been, there's been very few, if any, that are just single-family homes that have been approved, like where many of us live. And we haven't had a lot of those. It all seems to be for the larger units and multifamily, and there's not many just residential, just strictly residential. And, and so I was disappointed in that. And then I got here and I read this thing from Sue Anderson, and I'm hearing these things, so I'm kind of taking a little different look at it, particularly if we're going to have doctors and, and people like that living at some of these facilities. But I, I just want to get the message out there that we need to have some single-family properties, residential districts out there as well as the multifamily residential districts. That's just my feeling at this point, and I realize that I'm just one vote in five, but, but I, I'd just like to start getting that message out there that we need to have some of that as well. So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Ms. Waterfield? Did you ask?
No.
Oh, I thought you had.
I'm waiting to hear from the applicant.
Oh, me too.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's, well, let's hear from the applicant then.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. My name's Cam Boyd. I'm with Coastal Community Builders. First, I'd just like to thank you guys for taking the time to hear our project proposal and would like to thank staff for the time they've dedicated to looking into this and having some detailed discussions on it. For those of you who aren't aware, CCB Coastal Community Builders has been building the Santa Maria Valley for over 30 years. We've built thousands of homes here, most of which were single-family detached homes. One unique element about this property is the property seller made a condition on the sale of the property that a portion of it be age-restricted senior residences. And so that's kind of why you see it the way it is now. So that, just opening with that, I'll turn it over to Brian Schwartz and he'll present for us.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Patino, members of the city council, staff, members of the public. Brian Schwartz, urban planning concepts. We do have a brief PowerPoint presentation for you this evening, so with that, I'll just jump right in. So Mr. Eam showed a slide similar to this already. It shows the project site outlined in yellow. It's about 15 acres currently, PDR1 8,000. It would produce approximately a max, at four acres per, four units per acre, it'd produce about 60 units of single-family on about 8,000 square foot lots. There is mostly single-family surrounding this project site. What this slide does not show is all the other land uses and zoning on the east side of the freeway, which is predominantly single-family, and we have a slide later in the presentation that will show, that will show that. This is the site plan that, that was displayed previously. The main access would be off of Main Street, and then it goes into a small roundabout. To the right would be a gate entering the senior, the senior apartments, and then if you went straight, it would go into the duplex lots. There would be emergency access off of Spruce Drive to the north of the, in the duplex area, and then secondary access would be off Main Street for the, for the senior apartments. This is the, showing the senior housing facility. This is about 75 units per each building, and it is around a, the center courtyard there in the, in the middle. There's a community center with amenities, have access to open kitchen, gathering areas, laundry facilities. Outdoor amenities include spa, pool, area with lounges, outdoor fireplaces, exterior kitchens, fountains, bocce ball courts, nice resort-style amenities. These are the elevations. This is mostly a Spanish-style architecture, arched, arched entryways, wood, metal railing details, red tile roofs. These would be similar to La Venta style houses and townhouses just to the east that's located, and that also is complementary to the architecture and some of the buildings that you would find at Marion, at the Marion Medical Complex, and also some of the buildings on the north side of Main Street. And this is a closer look at some of that small lot duplex site plan. Some of the common amenities include a small neighborhood park with totlot barbecue area and an open play, play area, and then there's also a stormwater slash soccer field that would be able to be used as a stormwater basin, dual-use, and a soccer field most of the year. This is a little bit closer of a look of the duplexes. They have two-car garages, they're on individual lots, they have private fenced backyards. And, and you'll notice that the backyards are rather small, so that the opportunity to put an ADU in this backyard would be very limited, if, if possible at all, I'm not sure. There are state requirements that have setbacks and, and certain area that you can actually put an ADU in on the exterior of your property. Interior, I, I think a garage conversion is possible anywhere. And I'm just trying to address Councilman Cordero's question there.
So they could convert the garage?
Yes, and I don't know if there's a way for the city to place a condition that would not allow that.
That would be the case.
But that would be a, maybe a question for the city attorney. I, I think with the, what this product does though is with housing prices so high, it is really difficult for many people to afford a single-family detached house at 6,000 or 8,000 square foot lots. This is a little bit of a single-family feel, but it, it has a lot of the benefits of single-family, but it's, they're attached product, you still have homeownership, but it's going to be more affordable. So it'll be more affordable to the medical professionals or young professionals or some of the workers over at nearby, especially at the medical complex. These are the elevations. Again, Spanish-style. These are actually being built, this, this actual model is being built at Rice Ranch right now, and I understand it's very popular. And so this was the, the slide I was referring to previously. This, the slide on the left shows our analysis of the zoning east of the freeway. So this goes from, from Jones Street all the way up to the Broadway interchange. And we've looked at the zoning, and there is, for residential uses, 945 acres of residential zoning. And with that, there is less than 5% with, in the R2 and the R3 zones. So 95, approximately 95% of it is already all single-family east of the freeway. and less than 5% within R2 and R3.
On the east side.
On the east side, that's correct. And this is a slide that Mr. Ing showed, and just shows that it would be, if approved, it would be approximately 9.3 acres of the PDR2 and approximately six acres of R3. And so in summary, this project, it provides a different housing type to meet the extreme need for medium and high-density housing on the east side of the freeway. It would help house the medical staff at Marion and the various medical businesses in the area, as well as some of the students at AT Stills, as well as Hancock College. It provides gated, secured housing, particularly important for the seniors, and then it fulfills the wishes of the property owner, the Ibsen family. It eliminates potential traffic and parking impacts due to cut-through traffic and then the parking spill-over potential issues there. So that's our presentation. We look forward to your direction, and we're available for any questions.
Ms. Waterfield?
I do, I have some comments. Go back to the map that shows the project and the outlining residents. That one. So, my concerns, Brian, in Santa Maria, we're growing in leaps and bounds, and we're doing all sorts of things here. I understand the housing situation. But when I look at projects we have approved in the past, many of them condos that ended up getting converted, and we get such an impact of people coming in. We don't give consideration to the residents around there that have been there for years and years and years. Because I remember La Ventana, I was on the Planning Commission, and we wanted bigger, more wider homes, more property, everything there. And La Ventana 2, the same way, and that got cut down. Now we're going to throw in a whole bunch of people in a place that the outside have been living there forever. We've got the impact of the high school. The mayor and I have just recently attended a meeting with residents in regards to Monte Ave, right next to Walmart. Horrible situation. All those homes that have been there are now impacted by parking and cars and trash and alcohol. It has completely, the property values have gone down because of what's going on there. I don't want to create another one here because there is a need for housing. Because you may provide a need for housing, but then ruin what's already there, and it's a lose-lose situation. So I'm very hesitant to approve something like this just because I'm concerned about everything that's been around the residents here. And, but I'm only here for three months, so, you know. It's, I would not vote for it because of that.
And I understand.
Yeah, and I know you do, yeah.
I really do.
I know you do.
And I think one of the reasons we designed this project to be self-contained, if you will, is some of those issues. So that there would not, it would be walled, it would be gated. And so that the spill-over parking and the cut-through traffic would be eliminated, essentially.
But then I'm concerned with ADUs. There's nothing we can do about, well, the ADUs, but the conversion of the garages. Then you're putting in a lot of parking in there, and you're going to have the spill-over. I've sat here, and I've had developers tell me, you know, this, we're going to do this, we're going to do that, it's going to be great, it's going to be wonderful. Then they sell it. And it just falls apart. And, you know, we create little pockets of now, people that love their home, can't even sell it because of what was created around it. And it was very interesting, because the mayor and I went riding around to see for ourselves what was going on. So that is very concerning to me, it really is.
May I ask you a question? You said affordable for students and affordable for, like, people at AT Still and that. Is this going to be market rate?
This is, right now, it's proposed to be market rate. And when I said affordable, I think I was comparing it to the purchase of a single-family residential detached unit at 6,000 or 8,000 square foot lot. So it would be more affordable than that.
Okay, more affordable than whatever, but we're seeing the rents in Santa Maria, like, over $2,000. And it's not affordable for most people, and we recognize that. And those apartments that we were looking at were going for 5,000 and 6,000.
Yes.
In Santa Maria. You know, like I said, people were complaining in a residential area where they bought nice homes, and the overflow parking from the apartments next door were coming into their neighborhoods. They couldn't invite people over, you know, like you get together for a family. There's no place to park in front of their own house because of the overflow from the impact of the apartments. And the conversion of the garages, and there's not enough parking because the garages are being converted. It just, you know, it makes this big mess. Yes, we need housing, but we also need a lot of housing for some of these doctors and the CEOs of companies, so they aren't living, so they are living in Santa Maria and not going up to the beach or going south of us to live also. So, I know you've driven that street in the morning, or if you're leaving, like, the hospital or Hancock Park, you're going to go the back way instead of go down Main Street because it'll take you another half an hour extra to get to wherever you want to go downtown. But it's crazy in the morning, and it's crazy after. I have stood there many times watching the kids, the kids and the parents come out of Pioneer High School.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cordero.
In addition to that, having been over there for so many years myself, in addition to that, having been over there for many years myself, the traffic used to be somewhere around homeowners when it was westbound for peak time. And now the traffic is clear past Sway and down 166 way out toward the high school.
Yeah.
So the impact of traffic that they're talking about, they did a better job than I did of explaining the concerns, but the traffic is a very concerning issue. You have no idea. One of the most common calls we get, I get, is, I get it, last week I got one from my wife. It took her an hour. It took her an hour to get from the south part of the city to the north part of the city. An hour, in Santa Maria. She can't well-matter in heck. So the call was, I had to take it. But, so that's a very real issue that we kind of need to concern ourselves with. And I can see that Lori is right there with the answer for us.
If I, yes, thank you.
Yes, sort of.
I, too, am concerned, my biggest concern is the traffic flow going.
Everywhere.
Yeah, on East Main Street, yes, the traffic flow. But I will say that the concern about converting the garage makes no sense to me because the way that this area is currently zoned, from my understanding, if a developer were to come in and build single-family homes, the same scenario can occur where they can convert the garages. So that doesn't make sense to me. I think here, what's really happening is this fear of us changing the zoning and then having the state come in and building a housing complex without necessarily needing council approval. I think that that's where the concern is coming from, not so much about this particular project. And so if you can speak to what the timeline would be for the development and what, maybe what the funding looks like to make sure that this development doesn't fall through the cracks. But I agree, you know, the way that we've been building homes in Santa Maria makes it unaffordable. If you drive by the newer developments in the southwest portion of the city of Santa Maria, those are homes with six bedrooms. So the way in which we've built a lot of housing perpetuates multiple families cramming up into one home. It perpetuates high cost of housing. And so really building homes where single families can actually live in rather than needing to jam a bunch of people in because you have five empty bedrooms makes more sense to me, and it does reduce costs over the long run. So I'm actually a big supporter of this project. I want to, you know, really thank you for looking at ways in which we can make good use of our space and really infill, especially the way in which the project has been designed. So I don't know if you still remember my question or what I had said.
Did you have a question?
Yeah, just as a quick reminder, CCB's been building here for 30 years and, you know, not in the business of letting projects like this slip through the cracks. That said, with respect to project timeline, yesterday would be preferred, but essentially, we're going to be moving forward full speed ahead, trying to get this thing entitled and start building. With respect to project phasing, it's currently envisioned that we would build out the single-family duplex units first, and that's for financing purposes. You roll over the proceeds into the apartment complex, which is much more equity-intensive. So we've got a pretty solid plan in terms of how we're going to be able to make this thing a success.
And then, in terms of traffic, we talked a lot about traffic. So have you all had conversations about traffic flow on East Main Street?
We haven't had a full traffic study performed yet. That would certainly be part of the process. And presumably, if there were going to be issues, then that would be conditioned on the project, I assume, for whether it's enhancements or something.
It will be issues.
Did you want to talk?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Escobedo, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a question in regards to the corner on the southwest area. What is that property? Who's the owner? Is it part of the same, or who's? Oh, it's commercial? Okay.
It is not part of the same property. We have approached the owner multiple times, trying to acquire it. It appears as though that's not going to be happening anytime soon, which is why we're proceeding without it.
Okay, thank you. And, yeah, I do share, one of my concerns, as I work at Pioneer Ballet as a representative at Hancock, and I've wrote that, I've been driving around, and there's a lot of kids playing, a lot of, you know. So one of my concerns is, you know, the high schoolers and the traffic that this will bring. I mean, we're talking about, it was mentioned that two parking spots per unit. So we're talking about 480 vehicles that will be going there. And if you multiply by the population, it's just this huge spot. And one of my concerns is that they're going to be market rate. So it's not going to be of affordable housing per se. So, see, those are kind of my concerns about the project.
Mr. Cordero.
Did I hear you say something about apartments?
Yes.
You did?
Yeah.
Will you have onsite management at those apartments? You will have, okay. All right, go ahead. It's Lori's turn.
Okay, Lori, you wanted to say something, I'm sure.
Yeah, thank you very much. First of all, we've had the opportunity to work with CCB for 35 years and have enjoyed working on many projects, including La Ventana next door and East Ridge down the street. And, you know, what we've learned recently with some of the infill projects is the relationship with the neighbors. And this particular project, the way it's designed, would not have through traffic going north into the existing neighborhoods or going east along Jonathan. It's internalized and will be taking access off of Main Street. But I think that the important element is that this is a really diverse project. You know, the senior component has one and two-bedroom units, 55 and older. So you can think of the number of employees that are over at Marion that might need a smaller unit as an employee, very close access to the medical facilities there, even maybe some veterans that are, you know, take advantage of the veterans' facility. That senior component is critically needed in Santa Maria. And Dr. Ibsen, that was one of the reasons that he was entertaining Coastal Community Builders was because they met one of his commitments, was to provide housing for seniors. So this project won't get built unless there's a senior component to it by any developer. It'll just continue as it is. The second component is that the duplex units not only have two-car garages, but they also have two cars parked in front of the driveways. So they're providing four spaces plus additional parking. I mean, they've built in Santa Maria, they know what the problems are. And the fact that this is internalized and managed and you have the opportunities for looking at how this project could be built out. We're here tonight asking for an initiation of the process. We have a lot of work ahead of us. As Cam said, he would love to be building tomorrow, but we have a process to go through with the Planning Department, the Environmental Review, the traffic studies, the documentation. What I like about this project is the fact that it does have a senior component, so that you're not going to have that AM and PM traffic coming out of here. You will have stuff throughout the day, but it's not adding to the more critical times of the day. So we're hoping that you will authorize the processing of this application, and we will probably be back to you in about six to nine months with the final approval. So please let us move forward through this process.
What is the percentage on the senior, is there a percentage for the senior project?
The senior project has 150 units, about half are one-bedroom, and half are two-bedroom units.
Okay.
How tall are the apartments? How many stories are we talking about?
They're three-story.
Okay.
Pretty common with the other three-story buildings that you've seen, like at Villa del Sol and at...
Right, but these three-stories apartments are going to be around single-story family homes? That will they be looking down their backyards at things like this?
The senior component, if you could flip to the site plan, oh, sorry. The senior component is fronting Main Street. And it actually is consistent with the...
Right there.
So if you recall, La Ventana, the project next door, has the multifamily component up against Main Street also. So it kind of continued that theme of the more denser elements along Main Street, and then the more residential component in the back, correct?
So these are really going to be market-rate apartments? And everything's going to be market rate?
At this point, they're being proposed as market rate.
Well, Lori, I know you can appreciate my concerns.
Oh, yeah.
Because I've seen it all through the city and stuff, and it's just been such a heartache. And I just, putting pockets of different developments there. And, you know, CCB is excellent. I have no comms about them at all. Times are changing, you know, people are changing, situations are changing, and things don't seem to, rules and regulations don't seem to stay in order very long. People just run havoc and do what they want to do. And so, you know, those are my concerns. The mayor and I live it every day. We get calls every day in regards to it. So this is such a great area. La Ventana 1, La Ventana 2 has been wonderful. You know, I love those projects coming at the Planning Commission. I just want to keep it great. And the Ibsens family are wonderful people. And I can understand why they would want the senior project. project there, absolutely. So...
Mr. Ing, let me ask you a question. You know, I, I know, I know we need to build, and it's, infill is tough. It's always, I always struggle at infill because it does impact everyone around them. But on, on projects that are coming to us like this, where the zoning needs to be changed and everything, wouldn't it be more prudent to go to the planning commission where it's, it's more of a, not as formal as it is at the city council to really discuss this, where people, the living in the, in the area can come and give their input? Because that's what I really want to hear. I want to hear about the neighbors around there and the, because I don't live in that area. I know how bad it is when I try to get through different times of the day. I don't live there. So, I don't know all the impact it has on the, on the entire community there. It's just like, I don't, I don't like the supervisors from down south voting on things that impact us up north because they don't understand our community. But wouldn't it seem like to go through the planning commission and really dissect this?
Yes, Madam Mayor, council members, yeah. This, this is a conceptual review. We're not asking for a vote or action. The applicant, CCB, is ready to submit for a formal application to go through the review process, do the studies necessary, traffic study. We will route it to the different departments for their input and review. Ultimately, this will go before a planning commission as a public hearing. The neighbors will be notified, and there'll be an opportunity for a public input. So, yes, this is, it would still go through a, a public review process with analysis, and this is just before you, as, as a concept, but they're, they're ready to submit.
Okay, but I guess my, my, my purpose here is that I don't want them to put money into something that, that maybe comes back to this body and that we don't like it, is what I'm saying. I don't like them to spend money on something unnecessarily. Did you have a comment, Mr. Cordiero?
No, I think you guys have done a great job at bringing up the necessary questions, and you guys as well, trying to mitigate those, particularly you, Lori, thank you.
I will be gone in three months, so that's something going in your favor.
Providing direction to staff?
Providing direction to staff, does that, is it just...
It's a conceptual, what do you like?
I'm in support.
I am not. I am not in support.
Yeah.
I am not in support.
Yeah, I, I'm undecided at this point.
You, you, did you get this off your...
If, if the conceptual went to the planning commission where it, it's more of a casual environment and, and people got, because we're not hearing from anyone that lives around there.
Well, I live there, you're hearing from me.
Well, I live around there too, and I know how horrible that is.
Yeah. So, Madam Mayor, the, the other option that we can take is, we can take this as a study session item before the planning commission.
I would prefer that.
And sometimes that, and we can take that as a concept as well.
I would, I would prefer that, so that way, that way people can come and give their input. The people that live in that area, that's the valuable, valuable input, I think, is.
Let me, may I ask one more?
Sure, go ahead.
Under High School.
Sure.
Is, is there a way to have the ingress and egress from the property out the north side and onto Sway Road?
Oh, my God. I don't think so.
I don't think, it doesn't look like you're looking at this map.
I think if you looked at the vicinity map that's in the slides, there's no way to get out to Sway Road unless you take Jonathan, and there's about eight houses on Jonathan that we didn't want to impact.
That's right.
Initially, we had designed the project so that the senior housing component took access off of Jonathan. So, we kind of, at one point, split the traffic and had the senior component off of Jonathan, which goes east, or goes west to Sway Road. But we didn't, we didn't want to impact the neighborhood. So, we internalized it and had the main access off of Main and secondary access off of Spurce.
And you'll have to put a, a signal light there, because you're gonna have a lot of cars coming in and out. That's gonna have to be signaled.
It would be similar to what's at La Ventana, as far as entrance and exit there.
But you're putting a lot more people than La Ventana here.
It's a lot more people.
There's a lot more cars, a lot more people.
Again, I think what we're looking at is...
Just run it through the planning commission study session.
There you go.
There you go.
What would be the, what would be the issue if, if it was all senior? And that's not coming from me so much, it's already coming from peoples in the neighborhood due to modern technology here. So, could we make it all?
Well, what I'd like, if all these things could be handed over to the planning commission, they could do a study session, and it might, you know, might change, it might not change.
I think if it were all senior, then there would be less traffic, and we would be addressing some of the issues that met what gentleman was saying earlier, that it would help to mitigate some of the issues for senior residents elsewhere in the community.
But he has to do the duplexes for financing first to do the seniors.
So, what we can do is, thank you very much, first of all, for staff bringing this forward. We wanted you to see this because we know how important this area is for finishing out the build-out of this area. And it's a challenge because of the Ipsen condition that we have some of this element in the project. So, no matter what, we would be talking about some kind of general plan change and rezone for the senior component. Your idea about going all senior with the different product types is something that we could look at in the traffic study and see what it does for traffic.
Well, it would do two things. It would give, it would give more homes to seniors in town. It would limit the automotive issues, the traffic issue, and the traffic is going to be horrendous in addition to what the traffic is already there, you know?
So, we're, thank you very much, and we look forward to working with staff on this project and giving the direction that you've given us to move, not move forward, but to continue to review.
Absolutely.
We appreciate that.
How many units, before you go, total of the senior and the duplex altogether?
240.
Is it 150 and 45?
150 and 90.
150 and 90, 150 and 90, okay, thank you.
Also, just, just want to add that it's, it would be, it would be appropriate to have a invite also to Santa Maria High School, the school district, yeah, in regards to Pioneer Ballet, and have that in the conversation because that's, yeah, I think that's a, the community, the district will be very appropriate.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, gentlemen, thank you. Madam Clerk, do you have requests to speak, or written correspondence?
Staff, Madam Mayor, staff received two written comments from Joy Cook requesting that the density not be increased for the Paradiso project. She would also like to see the council ensure that the development is a single-story building accessible to seniors and suitable for seniors to age in place. The second was from Sue Anderson, President and CEO of Marion Regional Medical Center, expressing support for the project, noting that it would provide needed housing for seniors, physicians, and hospital staff. As well, these comments were provided to council earlier today and copies provided on the dais, and we had one request to speak.
A request to speak is Mr. Morris.
Oh, he's...
You're finished talking?
He's just managing my background.
Okay, great. Okay, so, I'm bringing this back to the council, and we're going to hand it off to the planning commission to do a study session? Is that...
Yes, that's fine, perfect.
Okay. Yeah. Well, I, I just think they can spend more time, people from the community come in and...
Gloria's spending too much time on her phone, taking her emojis off.
Oh, okay.
Like.
Okay. Next, we have another regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The city council will consider a recommendation of the planning commission to approve a planning development permit amendment and conditional use permit to revise the exterior architecture and establish a veterinary clinic in, in a proposed 7,000-square-foot mixed-use building on .17-acre site in the planned development medium-density residential district, and include conditions allowing the adjacent landowner to have signage.
Thank you.
That's an appeal.
And it's, it's an appeal. Staff report it's to be made by Community Development Director, Ms. Ring.
Good evening again, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This appeal is an item that you saw at the last city council meeting. Again, this location is at 1995 South Miller Street. The applicant, Dr. Farshid, is requesting that the city council grant an appeal to delete condition number four of the PD and CUP permits for Karen Hand's office. And condition number four requires relocation of an existing monument sign, advertising an adjacent medical business on the same site visible from Miller Street. Again, this is the project site, corner of Miller and Daniel. It's a property right on the corner, and there's an existing, the property on the corner is vacant, but there's the, the existing medical office building just located to the west. These are just images of the Celebration project with the property located at the corner. This is a street view of the property. You can see the existing mixed-use building to the west and the vacant lot on the corner.
Excuse me, Chuck, can you point to where the medical building is from this picture? Can you see it from this picture?
Yes, it's the existing building that's located on the, on the left of the photo here. There are some garages because it's, it's a mixed-use building.
Okay.
So, it's got offices and residential. Another aerial photo, and the red arrow points to the existing monument sign that's there on the vacant property now. The, there was an existing PD and CUP permit for a proposed building on the vacant site. These are architectural renderings of that proposed project or approved project. Little more background, the monument sign was constructed prior to the applicant's purchase of the property and was allowed to be installed in its current location by the previous property owner. The project at the corner was reviewed by the planning commission back in June. The commission voted to include condition number four, that prior to issuance of CFO, the monument sign located on Lot 54 shall be relocated to a location that is visible from Miller Street. Dr. De Sai, who represents the property to the west, supports the condition. As part of the appeal request, the appellant states that the condition should be removed because there is no easement to benefit 355 Daniel Drive, the property to the west, that the condition is vague and ambiguous and unenforceable, and that there is no privity or contract that requires the applicant to allow the sign to be placed on the property because there is no contract with any prior owners that runs with the land and binds successors. There is an existing sign program for Celebration that envisioned signage to be placed in the common areas, but when Lot 54 was created, no reservation or easements were created. By not requiring common signage areas or easements on the tentative map, the city does not have the legal basis to require the applicant to establish signage for another business on the applicant's private property or elsewhere as a condition to build a project. Therefore, staff recommends that the appeal...
Ms. Ring, Ms. Waterfield has a question for you.
Yes.
Okay, so, is there an HOA on this property?
There is an HOA on the property.
So, shouldn't the HOA have designated somewhere on that property, since there was already a sign placed there, that this was part of the property when purchased? I'm not sure how those HOA works.
I will turn to staff, but it's, yes, the HO, the homeless, the, the association has the ability to create these common areas for signage, and I don't know what conversation has occurred within the associations to provide that accommodation.
Okay, go ahead.
I may. Mayor Patino, Councilmember Waterfield, Currys, and Henny, Senior Planner, Community Development Department. The HOA has been in communication with both the applicant and Dr. De Sai, the neighbor, regarding signage, and the HOA, from, from my understanding, has encouraged both parties to communicate with each other. There has been no provision from the HOA, to my knowledge at this point, for signage elsewhere on the project or in the, in the common area of the plaza right next to the proposed office building or approved office building.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Ring.
Go ahead.
So, staff, with, with these discussion points, staff recommends that the appeal be granted and the project be approved without the inclusion of condition number four regarding signage. This concludes staff's presentation.
Okay. Questions at all, Ms. Ring? No questions, okay.
I'll wait for the applicant.
Do, do I have any requests to speak, Madam Clerk?
Is the applicant gonna speak?
Yeah, but I wonder if I have requests to speak.
Madam Mayor, we have one, we have actually four in, in the building to speak, requests to speak, and then...
The appellant?
We have one on Zoom.
Okay.
And we have no written communications.
Okay, so the, so you're speaking for the appellant, Mr. Senko?
That is correct, Mayor Patino.
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor Patino, members of the city council, city staff. Excuse me, Councilmember Waterfield, I can address the question a little bit about the HOA. In the meantime, since the continuance of this item, while we did not discuss anything with Dr. De Sai directly, I made an attempt to communicate with the HOA. There's a person who's in, the president, Veronica Rodriguez is her name. I called her and left a voice message, and I never received a call, a call back, and I followed it up with a detailed email asking if the HOA, you know, especially under the circumstances where a prior owner didn't secure rights for, you know, a tenant that he granted permission to put a sign on, didn't secure those rights before he sold the property, I thought HOA could really help out with this situation because there's a little common area just to the north of the proposed building that the sign could be visible from Miller, and it wouldn't be on my client's property. I did not hear back. And all I asked was that would they be even willing to consider it? And it was crickets. So, I don't know what to say other than that, that that seemed pretty telling that they're not interested in assisting in the resolution of this.
So, then you probably wouldn't know if you, if you have a sign on a property and it's run by an HOA, that you're paying extra for that sign? You're paying extra dues to the HOA for that sign being displayed there?
Yeah, I can't answer that question.
You can't answer that one either?
That, that would probably be a reasonable thing, you know, just as if Dr. De Sai wanted to put a sign on my client's property, he should pay rent if my client was interested. That would be appropriate. But anyway, I, I do want to address the fact that we did not use this interval to try to resolve this issue directly with Dr. De Sai. If I had been allowed to speak, I would have mentioned that we weren't, I would have told you we were not going to do that. It's not that my client is completely unwilling to discuss the issue of the sign with Dr. De Sai, but he's not willing to do so as long as the city is essentially interfering in what is a private civil matter between the two owners. Having a pending appeal hanging over my client's head is a little more than a way to put undue pressure on him to do something that the city does not have the legal right, or excuse me, the legal authority to require. And frankly, that's unfair to my client. You may believe that Dr. Sai, excuse me, not allowing him signage is unfair, but that is also not an issue that's within the reasonable decision-making jurisdiction of the city council, hence why it should be resolved by civil courts or negotiations between the party. So, I just want to reiterate a few things. The facts have not changed since the city, prior city council meeting. One, the planning division staff recommended a project to the planning commission without any requirement that my client allow signage for the benefit of Dr. De Sai. Staff did not impose any such requirement because, as explained at the meeting, there were no easements or a sign program for common signage. When clarifying... When clarification was sought from the city attorney, he advised, and I'm paraphrasing, that the request for signage was not being made by the city, but was being made by Dr. Desai, and that the city did not have the ability to enforce that request against my client, and my client is not legally required to comply with it. Two, even though the city attorney also advised the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission went ahead and imposed this condition, which is why we're here. Three, the staff report to the city council and as well as tonight, and it was quoted here just a few minutes ago, specifically states, "The city does not have the legal basis to require the applicant to locate signage for another business on his private property or elsewhere as a condition to build the proposed project." So, lastly, the other thing that hasn't changed, and Councilmember Waterfield, you may not have had the benefit of hearing what I'm saying.
You know, I did today. I went and saw the Planning Commission meeting, and I saw the last city council meeting. So, I, I kind of got the gist of what's going on, so I don't want you to have to irritate a lot of stuff, yeah.
Thank you. I just want to reiterate that I did make a legal argument based on the United States Supreme Court case of Nolan versus California Coastal Commission, which is a case that concerns a, one, a government decision, a regulation constitutes an unconstitutional taking. And as I stated, the taking occurs when there's no essential nexus between a government decision and the public interest it is intended to protect.
Let me stop you right there, because I was, I was curious. A taking is eminent domain. This is an eminent domain.
That's correct, but it could be, and if, the term escapes me, but it's a inverse condemnation, not officially taking eminent domain, just an act of the government that essentially results in that, but without paying the compensation, which is why it's a taking. I didn't want to get too technical, that's why I didn't go into a great deal about it. I just wanted to emphasize that there has to be a connection between what the government is trying to do, like this condition of approval, and a public benefit that it's trying to-
It's public-private.
Yeah.
You're talking public-private.
And this is a private benefit, so it's not, there's no way there's an essential nexus, and then it would be unconstitutional taking. And that's really all I had to say. I'm able to answer some questions, and my client's here, and Mr. Martinez, the project architect, is here, if there's any other questions.
I do have questions for staff, because I was on the Planning Commission in 2011. I'm really old, and so-
I think I was there, too.
It, that's right, you were there. And, and this is for staff, so if, in regards to the signage, my question, and where did she go? Oh, there you are. So, we granted Mr. Desai a permit. He had to fill out an application for a signage, and we, we gave him the permit and said, yes, this is great, we approved the signage and everything. Now, was there any, was there any expiration on that signage when he, when he paid for it and he did everything he had to do? And was it, and this was before it was sold, correct? And so, was there any expiration that say, this signage is good until someone comes in and buys this piece of property, then you have to renegotiate the signage?
You're a-
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Waterfield, a building permit was issued for the monument sign that gives them permission to build the sign, but that's, that's really, a building permit is usually issued to ensure that, you know, it's been reviewed and that it would be constructed in a safe manner.
Okay.
It, it's not necessarily suggesting that there are, that it's, that there are rights for, for, for the signage.
So, the building permit, that signage does not follow that piece of property? In other words, when that property was being sold, there's no disclosure in regards to that sign on that piece of property?
Property owner permission is required for construction on, on the property. So at the time, there, there was property owner permission for the signage.
And so would the realtor have had to disclose that to the gentleman over here when he was buying this piece of property?
Yeah, that's something I can't answer.
I don't think it would apply because it's a new owner, it's a new property owner. So it wouldn't apply, from what I'm hearing.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, maybe, maybe our, maybe our attorney can explain this.
Perhaps I can assist.
Thank you.
There are, there are various types of rights that you can have on another person's property. You can have a license, you can have an easement, you can have a possessory right that's purchased, so you actually have a fee.
Okay.
Each one of those have different, I won't call them expirations, they have, they have a, a range of permissions. In this case, as I understand the facts, as the current applicant has said, there is no legal basis for longstanding permanent occupation of that property, which would be either an easement or a fee title.
When does a grandfather issue come in? When you, when something's been there for a certain length of time, when does that get grandfathered in?
Grandfathering is a type of use that continues beyond the, a change in the law.
Okay.
Okay, so a liquor store that's next to a church that's been there for 50 years, and we say, no liquor stores next to church, that would be grandfathered in. It's a use, okay? Not a possessory interest.
Got it.
What, the, 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 the real, the real problem and the conflict we have here is the property rights of the new owner versus the established right of a, of a person who owned this sign.
Right.
The new owner, whether the realtor told him or not, the new owner has contended, and staff has verified, that there is no legal basis for that sign to remain. Without the legal basis for that sign to remain, there isn't anything that, that as, has been said previously, the city can then assist in, because our issue is, we use our police power, regulatory schemes and, and building permits, so that we can protect the public interest. In this case, this condition doesn't protect the public interest, it imposes a, an obligation on the property owner for a private benefit, and that private benefit is a signage of a third party.
So I-
It would be no different than if, if you had a billboard on your back, the back of your property, and someone came in and, and bought that property, and they painted over that billboard because they didn't like the message. They have that right to do that unless there's a legal basis for them not, and the city wouldn't come in and say, you can't paint it.
So, in essence, Mr. Desai took a gamble on his piece of, on his signage, on that piece of property, knowing that someday it would be sold, and it wasn't, it wasn't etched in concrete, contracted, or anything like that?
I don't even, I don't even know if it was a gamble. He received the benefit of 10 years of a sign on another person's property. What he didn't do is he didn't have it, that, the long-term of that sign memorialized in some sort of legal document. He didn't buy that, he didn't do something else. So, so it was, it was rather than a gamble, it was simply he got the opportunity to have a sign there for 10 years until somebody built on it.
So, in your opinion, was the Planning Commission in error of their decision?
Yes.
Okay.
I agree.
Simple answer.
Madam Mayor.
Okay, one minute, are you, are you finished?
I'll probably have more questions.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, just a quick question to Mr. Cinco. Has there been any communication from the other part to talk, to talk about this, this issue?
Since the previous hearing?
Yes.
No?
Thank you.
Okay.
Do you know why?
No.
Okay.
I assume probably the same reason that he felt that he had a right and why negotiate?
Okay, my, my next question to you, Mr. Cinco, would be, would your client be willing to negotiate with Mr. Desai about doing two, you know, doing a monument sign? Because this is completely up to you. A monument sign that will have both his veterinarianary and then Dr. Desai. I mean, we do that, you know, with Best Buys and all these other things. That would be kind gesture. It would be a very kind gesture. It would be helping patients come in and come out. It would just be a helpful gesture, is all. Because I understand, Mr. Watson explained it to me thoroughly, and I understand, and I'm just trying to find a solution so that both parties can come together and just be amenable, be kind, and just say, okay, let's, let's find a solution to make this work.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Waterfield. I said at the previous hearing that it wasn't out of the realm of possibility that my client and Dr. Desai could work this out on their own. I left that open because that is a distinct possibility.
Right.
It just isn't going to happen so long as the city is involved.
Right, no, I get it.
Because it's unfair to my client, so, and, and he's got a legal right to say no. What's going to happen in the future, we don't know. However, we've already looked at two possibilities. I mentioned one was contacting the HOA, see if they would help out. Apparently not, at least not at this point. There is another possibility that we're looking at, but we're not prepared to discuss it at this time. And there's always, like I said, there's always the possibility that there could be some kind of rental agreement, which would be appropriate, because Dr. Desai would gain a valuable right to have his sign on my client's property, but he should pay for that if he doesn't own the property or if he doesn't have a legal right. So, it would be kind, but it's not going to happen as long as the city has got this hanging over his head.
No, I understand that. So let's say it got thrown out. I would like to ask your client if he would, if he would speak to Dr. Desai and come to an amenable decision in regards to this.
I don't really think that's fair or relevant, but I can let him answer if he wishes.
I would, I would like to hear from him.
It would be basing the decision on his promise to do something that he's not legally required to do.
I know, but-
And he may not want to do it, and it's his right to, if he wants, doesn't want to do-
You just reverse the roles, you know? If you reverse the roles, and this was happening the other way around, is all. I just, you know, I just think it's just, this is Santa Maria, we're kind to each other in Santa Maria. I mean, we, we help each other out.
You're kind of like it is right now with this order.
We help each other out.
He's, he's willing to say some things.
Yes, please.
Good evening, I hope everybody is having enough energy to hear my voice.
Absolutely.
I've been suffering a lot, and at this moment, I'm not able to make my decision yet. After that night, I couldn't sleep at all, because it didn't seem fair to me. I paid for the land. I have been paying tax on the land, I have been taking care of the weeds, everything, and someone else is placing the sign on my land and just, you know, trying to enforce me to accept the sign on the land at this moment without paying anything, something for free. So, unfortunately, my mind is not ready at this moment. I would like to go ahead with, you know, doing the construction. Then I decide I have to take a look at the land, see if there is any possibility to let him place the sign on-
Thank you very much. No, I, I understand, and it would just be my wish and well-being for both of you and for the city of Santa Maria, that you two could come together and, you know, come to an amenable solution for this, because Santa Maria, businesses are friendly towards one another, and we help each other out, and that's, you know, that's all I'm saying.
I appreciate your point of view.
Yes.
Actually, I'm doing this construction for the city of Santa Maria. I have many clients coming to me, and I see my clients foreseeing specialists. They are traveling to LA, Santa Maria, San Francisco.
Your, your business is in LA right now?
No, it's here, but I see my clients have to travel. I have one of them here. His cat has lymphoma, he has to go to see a specialist just for the treatment. He has to take off of the work. He has to spend a lot of money on traveling.
Correct, no.
My plan is to build this business as soon as-
Absolutely.
It's a lot of headache for me in future, but I'm accepting because I love my clients and my patients. But this issue has made me having problem with sleeping, you know, doing my job properly. So I want to solve the problem, and if there is something-
Absolutely.
-can happen in future, I can talk to-
I, I just have one more question to ask you, and when you looked at the property and saw it, and you saw that sign there, did you question if that sign belonged there?
You know, actually, there was the sign from the seller of the building, and they were supposed to remove, and they contacted Dr. Desai to remove the sign. He didn't reply to the emails.
Okay.
And when the deal was over, I ended up having the sign on the land.
Okay.
That was the problem, so.
All right, okay.
Madam Mayor.
Appreciate it.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot.
Okay, I have, I have some people that want to speak.
Oh, no, no, I-
Do you want to hear it?
Yeah, I'd like to.
Madam Clerk, how many people do we have to speak?
Madam Mayor, we have four present, and we have Dr. Desai on Zoom.
Dr. Desai on Zoom. Okay, why don't we have Dr. Desai speak?
Hello there. Can you hear me? Yes. Hi, I'm Dr. Desai. I got Parkinson's, that's my camera on a shake, I believe. Basically, to answer a few questions. No one contacted me by email to remove my sign before this gentleman bought the property. Number one. Number two, I bought the property with the condition that I'd be able to sign upon the building, I'm in on the corner there, because my office is on the west side of the building that I own now, and the east side has the garages. My office is not visible to the general public. And that was a condition that I was satisfied with because there was, you know, HOA signage program, because there was going to be multiple residential and commercial use buildings along the development there on, on Miller. In the middle of, after the permit was done and the sign was built and everything was approved, the property owner changed, and the new property owner also agreed with the signage, because of the sign program. What they changed, the development-
Can you guys hear very good? You can hear it okay? Okay, everyone can hear it fine? Yeah, okay.
Just the corner top, commercial. I think what happened is, the signage program was not updated or reviewed at that time, and therefore this gentleman is saying, my land, my land. I've been completely willing to change the sign location. He's not willing to talk, like every time I talk to him, it's, this is my land, take your sign off.
I can't understand that. Can you understand?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
He asked him, he, he wishes to charge me a lot of money for rent. Basically, in effect, it does not let me afford to have the sign there. I am a business for the last 11, 12 years in that location. I've been following the rules. The situation has changed in the area, I understand that, but there should be some common agreement, a legal right to have a sign, to allow my patients to know where my office is. If there are any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions of Dr. Desai? Any questions? Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Desai.
Thank you. Okay, I have four requests to speak. I have Tracy Calata and Michael Calata. Trace, are you Tracy? No, you're not Tracy. Oh, okay.
So, real quick, you know, apart from the issues with the signage and whatnot, just to give you an idea of, like, Dr. Farshid mentioned that our cat has cancer. She had cancer about three years ago. The nearest specialist is at Santa Barbara, which is over an hour drive for us, puts a lot of stress on the cat, and we spent probably over $24,000 treating her, okay? And, so that's money that's not being spent here, it's being spent in Santa Barbara. And she actually, the cancer returned just a few weeks ago, and I'm guessing we're going to spend another $15,000 for the second course of treatment. So that's money, again, that's being spent there and not here. And having Dr. Farshid here, I really trust him, we've had him for quite a while now, is our vet, and he's done a great job, and it, I think, is very important to have this facility built. Santa Barbara, 100,000 people, Santa Maria, 100,000 people. I know from talking to the veterinarians in Santa Barbara, people travel from 100, 200 miles away just to see them, because they don't have those clinics there. So I think it's very important to have this clinic here.
Thank you. Thank you. Jan McGee, followed by Janine Wade.
Council members, I appreciate the opportunity of speaking onto this issue, and it's unfortunate that a compromise for a sign could have such a terrible impact on such a beneficial building to be built there. This proposed building would be another acute facility for the animals in our area. We have Pets Hospital, but often there's a long wait to get an animal into there, so we really could use another one. Also, with regard to other issues there, there would be a veterinarian of specialty, whether it be heart, eyes, whatever, that could rotate and come weekly or monthly so we wouldn't have to make the trip down to either Ventura or Los Angeles or some other place when one of our animals is really in need of special care. The upstairs on this would provide a relaxation and sleeping area for the traveling veterinarian, and that would be a great opportunity because otherwise, they have to go all the way into the city for hotel rooms, et cetera, when all they need to do is, you know, they could just be right there on the facility and be available for whatever is needed. Bless you. I'm hoping that somehow, some way, we might be able to relocate the sign because, as I understand it, the Planning Commission does not want to issue a permit so we can build this wonderful facility until the sign is relocated or we have some conclusion on that. So, I'm hoping we can come to some sort of an agreement because this is something that we really do need in our area, and poor Pets Hospital, they get overloaded, and we're sending animals out to Atascadero and down to Ventura and Galito because we really could use another facility, and I thank you very much.
Thank you. Janine Wade.
Oh, City Council, thank you for allowing us this opportunity. So, my name is Janine Wade. I'm with the Central Coast SPCA, and it has a lot to do with animals. We rescue animals, and we use a lot of vets in our area. We lose a lot of vets in all sorts of areas. Last, I think it was July, we had a mom and five puppies that we rescued out of Bakersfield, and within a few days, they all, one by one, broke parvo. Dr. K was treating them. He was, you know, frantically trying to, you know, keep these little guys alive. Pets Hospital was six hours wait. They could only take one. It ended up that we had to put one at Pets, two at Central Coast Emergency Hospital, and three up in Atascadero. Our total bill for that was $32,000. If Dr. K had had this facility, that would have been so much less. That's a chunk for a nonprofit. As you guys all know, that's, that's, that's our entire year budget, actually. But I saw the map, and I've seen the sign, and I'm hoping that the council will see the, the, Etta, you talked about being friendly, and you're right, but is this being friendly to Dr. K? He moved here to build this, you know, he took over Dr. Massey's vet clinic. He came from out of town. He brought his kids. He brought his wife. He brought his family, and this is how we treat him? We're saying that he has to exist with the sign right in front of his building that is for a business that's across the street? I don't get the, I don't even understand why it's even such a big issue. I don't understand it. I know that as a property owner, I would expect him to have more rights than that, than to be forced. Now, that said, he's the friendliest guy you ever want to meet. He will probably take your advice, Etta. He talked to me about that. He's willing to do whatever, but he's being forced into a corner, and he can't even develop the property. He can't even get his architect to move forward with this sign looming in front of the business. So, it needs to be resolved. We need this vet clinic, and I appreciate you guys letting me talk.
Thank you. Okay, I'll bring this back. The council, any other questions you have? Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think the common theme here is exactly what I said two weeks ago, and that is, these gentlemen need to come together. Ms. Waterfield has said it. Somebody else has said it in the, in the writings, in the letters, and all we underneath, all we kind of, all I'm looking for, I can't say what the other council people are looking for, is a, is a willingness to work together. This young lady that just spoke said, is this being nice to you? Well, is it being nice to the other guy who's enjoyed this sign there for 11 years? So, there's, there's plenty of niceness to go around. This could be solved here, and it can start with you. And I, I, I just don't, I don't, I don't know what the big holdup is. I got the feeling that there's something here that we don't know about. There's some anger, some disappointment, some hatred that needs to be dealt with so that we can all, including yourself and these fine ladies here, can move forward. And the gentleman from Santa Barbara, we'd love for you to spend your money here. That's another issue, but there's, there's no part on our part about not wanting to hurt either business. We would like to see them both profit. That's simply said.
Mr. Escobedo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've, I had the opportunity of watching the Planning Commissioner meetings and after reviewing all the notes and everything that had been said, and I do understand the frustration of, you know, the disadvantaged position that you are right now by having this condition that would not allow you to, to have this conversation because there's this in that, you know, you're not, you're not in the same position as the other business. So, and I think that it's unfortunate that we have to postpone or have this, yeah, basically, not allowing a new business to come to Santa Maria to build, to, because I, you know, as you mentioned, every day that you don't build, you're losing money, and I think it's a, you know, our city is, is looking forward to bring more businesses and businesses that will bring value to, to Santa Maria, and I think it's under the situation, one thing is like, the city shouldn't, we shouldn't be part of it. This is a civil matter, so I, I think it's a, that sign, that conversation should be between the businesses, and we should let you guys have that conversation. So, yeah, those, those are some of my thoughts.
Ms. Waterfield. Yes. I think we need to take the emotion out of it and look at the facts. And talking to our attorney, when he talked about the public and private issues, I understood that because this is a private issue, but we can't let you two discuss it until we get out of the way, and we need to get out of the way. And I'm, I'm, I'm ready to make a motion.
I second.
That we approve the grant project without conditions so that the two gentlemen can get together because if that is hanging over their heads, they're never, ever going to come together, and it's very unfortunate for both parties, completely unfortunate. Dr. Desai, I just, but I do have a solution for his sign, and this is what I'm thinking. If Dr. Desai, because the HOA should have been here, they should have been involved, and this is where this, I, correct me if I'm wrong, this is where I think the city needs to say, Dr. Desai can put a sign on his wall on his property so people can see it. He's got to have a sign so that people know where it is. So, if we can do a sign on his, above his garage, I don't know how tall your building's going to be, but, you know, we've got to make sure that he gets his signs so that people can, can see where he is.
So, is the motion to adopt the recommendation?
The motion, the motion is to approve the appeal grant project without conditions.
I second. Without any conditions.
Without any conditions.
Okay, because you're talking about a sign, but you're saying.
Just, just to clarify. If you move staff's approval, that would be appropriate because there are other conditions that are appropriate that we don't want to eliminate.
Okay, okay, okay. We don't want to create more. Sorry. No.
So, if you just move the staff's, the staff's recommendation, that would be sufficient.
Yes, but I, you know, Chung and Tom, can we work with Dr. Desai to get a sign for his property that's visible so, you know, people can see, see it that way? It's just a win-win situation, and Dr. Rashid can do what you want to do on your property.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield.
Aye.
Councilmember Soto.
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero.
No.
Councilmember Escobedo.
Aye.
And Madam Mayor Patino.
Aye. Motion carried. Okay. The next item is a report by City Manager, Mr. Stillwell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two items to note tonight. First is the October 18th City Council meeting. We will come back with the Cook Street surplus property across the street with the additional or the modified acreage, thank you, for that, and then we have the CDBG capital project proposals for council direction. And second, I'd like to let the City Council and the public know that we appointed, or we went through a recruitment last week for Public Works Director. We had candidates from throughout the United States, very strong candidate pool, and for that, I want to thank our HR Department, our Human Resource Department. They did the internal recruitment, saved us money on executive recruiting, and came up with some excellent candidates, so I want to thank HR for that. And at the conclusion of the process, Brett Folgony came out on top, and so we appointed him as our new Public Works Director.
Perfect.
So, we want to recognize Brett and congratulate him, and you'll see him at upcoming council meetings. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. So, then, council members, let's see, Mr. Cordero, let's start at your end.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On the 21st, I did the Ben Hayes Show, and he was nice enough to do it remotely, so while I was on my way up to Monterey, I pulled off the, I pulled all the way off the freeway. I wasn't talking on the cell phone and, and did the Ben Hayes Show. Then, I was up at Monterey with the 3CE, very interesting group of people. It, it, I, I came away with the idea that, that there's, there's a lot of people up there that are green energy and electric vehicles and this kind of thing, but there's also a lot of honesty saying, yeah, but that's a ways off, and we can't just do a light switch thing and, and make it happen, so I was pleased with that. I think they're on the right track. It was fascinating to see how these things are moving. Tom up there, Habashi, is that his?
Habashi.
Habashi, that guy. He was very, very informative, and the young lady that we had, Russian gal from, that we had breakfast with, she was also very interesting.
She wasn't Russian. She only had a Russian accent.
Russian accent, yeah. So, I was real, I was real happy with that, and it was, it was very informative. And that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Escobedo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On September 22nd, I attended the mobile home, mobile home model lease meeting, and that's it for my report.
Nope.
Ben Hayes, councilmembers.
That's it? Okay. September 20th, did the Ben Hayes Show, did a business crimes meeting with a group of people talking about crimes that are, that are impacting, affecting their businesses, attended the 3CE annual meeting in Monterey, and I would agree with you, Mr. Cordero, I mean, there's, there's people all over the gamut there on, on what should be done with electricity, but I don't think people realize all the natural gas that it takes to produce electricity. But Mr. Habashi, who is the CEO, is very, very pragmatic about, anyway, was very interesting. September 26th, I did the Center for Employment Training. I was the guest speaker, and I went to Liberty Elementary School to visit their students and visit, and I did the junior CEO kickoff event. The junior CEO is done with the Chamber of Commerce, and so the, these young kids, junior high kids, come in and they've decided they're going to, they're going to start a business, and they have their parents, they put in, they get loans if they need loans, or they can borrow, I guess, from their folks, and they start businesses. And one young girl that, that, this was, she'd already done this for about a year, and she sells soaps and does a business. Another young girl had the cupcakes that she made to sell there at the, and it was, it was a pizza-type dinner for the kids, and they looked so professional. So, these kids are getting a good idea of, of what it takes to run a business and the kind of money it takes and, and when they have to pay some of their employees. On September 28th, I did another business and crime meeting with the Bradley Square people and did a Marion Foundation Board meeting. And October 3rd, special SBK and APCD meeting because I sit on those boards. This evening, I'd like to, I'd like to take the opportunity to adjourn our meeting in the name of Ori Johnson, who was a pastor here in Santa Maria, and I went to a celebration of life last Friday, September, Friday, September 23rd, and I think, I don't know if a lot of people realize how much he and his wife, because they, they did everything together, brought to Santa Maria when they decided to locate here in Santa Maria, and both of their boys played football at Santa Maria High, so I, I used to go watch them play because they were great athletes. But it was the Victory Harvest Church where he was the pastor, and such a pleasant man, both of them were pleasant people, and brought so much and contributed so much to Santa Maria, and I think we've seen people move in from different parts of the United States or the world and make Santa Maria the great place it is to live.
Madam Mayor, I was there with you for that, and those people that celebrated his life, they just know how to celebrate, how to have a great time, and it was just, it was an amazing event.
And I sat next to a woman that came up from Long Beach, and there were different pastors from all over California there.
Several from out of state.
Yeah, so, anyway. Pastor Ori Johnson, we're going to miss you. Meeting is adjourned.